Commissioner Smith, will you give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day, please, sir?
Let us some attitude of prayer. Most gracious and almighty God, our Father, once again, that we come before your presence, come before your presence for thanksgiving, thankful for all the many blessings that have bestowed upon us. As we now protect the business of this city, where as to your guidance and leadership, that all that we shall say and do be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. This we pray in thy son and Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On April the 2nd, nineteen seventeen, President Woodrow Wilson asked Congress to send U.S. troops into battle against Germany in World War I. In his address to Congress that day, Wilson lamented, "It is a fearful thing to lead this great peaceful people into war." Four days later, Congress obliged and declared war on Germany. In February and March of nineteen seventeen, Germany embalmed in war with Britain, France, and Russia, increased its attacks on neutral shipping in the Atlantic, and offered in the form of the so-called Zimmerman telegram to help Mexico regain Texas, New Mexico, and Arizona if it would join Germany in a war against the United States. The public outcry against Germany forced President Wilson in asking Congress to abandon Americans' neutrality to make the world safe for democracy. Fact of the day.
All right. Want to go ahead and read the decorum statement? Everybody, welcome to the public meeting of the City Council of the City of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. The City Council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the Council for action. If you wish to address this Council this afternoon, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and have presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone, stating your name, address of record, organization, and direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The Council and the city staff encourages constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude and derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violations of these provisions may result in the issuance of a verbal warning, including warning for trespass. If violations persist after such warnings, violators may be removed from the Council chambers. And with that, Joe Burke.
Hi, Joe Patton, Director of Human Resources. Today, we celebrate our employees' years of service with the city. And I'm going to call out some names. Two individuals are here, they're present. The others could not make it. So I will just read their names and years of service and what department they're in. So Ryan Dennington, Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services Division, ten years he's celebrating. Joshua Ronan, Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services Division, ten years. Dr. Shakinya Harris Jackson, Finance Department. Dr. Jackson.
She's here.
She... Dr. Harris Jackson was born and raised in Tangerine and Apopka, where she attended Dream Lake Elementary, Apopka Middle, and Apopka High Schools. She obtained her Bachelor of Science degree in Health Science from the University of Florida and went on to obtain an MBA and Doctorate degree in Educational Leadership. Dr. Jackson began her career with the City of Apopka on March thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, as the city's Grants and Neighborhood Services Coordinator within the Administration Division. Her position was reclassified in March thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, to Grants Neighborhood Services Manager. Then on October first, two thousand and eighteen, Dr. Jackson transferred to her current position as Grants Administrator within the Finance Department. Throughout her tenure, she has helped create the Apopka Youth Works and Apopka Youth Council programs, and has worked to secure the city's millions of dollars in funding for infrastructure, recreation, and community development projects. When not at the office, Dr. Jackson enjoys spending time with her husband of twenty years, Anthony, and their son AJ, who is fifteen. Andrew Robinett, Parks and Recreation Department, Athletics Division, he's celebrating five years. Christopher Wood, Police Department, Field Services Division, he's celebrating ten years. Allison Fanning, Police Department, Communications Dispatch, she's celebrating fifteen years. And Vance Maloney, Police Department, Support Services Division, fifteen years. Detective Maloney began his career with the City of Apopka Police Department on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and ten, as a police officer in field services. Notably, he joined the Honor Guard on March twenty-second, two thousand and twelve, and the Emergency Response Team on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen. On March sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, he was promoted to Lead Police Officer, and on November twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen, he was transferred to his current position as a detective within the Criminal Investigations Division. Next is Kim Lon-Dillon, Public Service Department Sanitation Division, he's celebrating five years. Kevin Morgan, Public Services Department Sanitation Division, ten years. Jeremy West, Public Service Department Storm Water Maintenance Division, ten years. And that concludes ours. So if you would remain here, and we could get a picture for everyone, please. And that concludes our service pin ceremony.
All right, we've got two sets of minutes. One was the regular City Council meeting of March nineteenth, and a second set of Charter Amendment Workshop Minutes from March nineteenth as well.
I just have two small edits. One on the Council Minutes for March nineteenth itself, it was page four of that one. Just want to add in that we did have some dialogue after Mr. Mom Taz agreed to start on April twenty-eighth to provide more time for his project to be completed. I wanted to make sure that it was referenced that I'd asked a question of the mayor if he felt that it was inappropriate for Mr. Mom Taz to be starting while he's overlooking his own projects, and the mayor had stated no. So I just wanted to make sure that was referenced in these minutes. And then on the Workshop Minutes themselves, page eight, it was referencing the timelines and discussion that we were going through, and the timelines that needed to be. We needed to have first reading today, which is obviously not on the agenda. And then the second reading, the second meeting in April, which obviously, like I said, is not happening, but it states specifically that those meetings and those approvals would be for the November election, and that's actually for, it would have been for the July election, is what the supervisor of election had said. So I want to make sure that's reflected properly, that it wasn't for, to approve on November is for a July election, special election for that.
That's page eight, you said?
Yes, correct. Just with those two small changes.
Okay, can motion approve with those changes?
So moved.
Can I motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion. Here's an answer. All right, Art and Foliage Festival, all our ladies in green. Wow, 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 yes. We are so excited. How many? Sixty-three, sixty-four? What are we? Sixty-third. Yes, yes, yes. So we are so excited. Let me go ahead and read the proclamation, then we'll have a couple ladies come up and give us the lowdown on what it's going to look like this year. It'll be awesome. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Apopka Women's Club was organized sixty-eight years ago and has been instrumental in sponsoring the Apopka Art and Foliage Festival for many years. It is the City of Apopka's pleasure to be a part of the sixty-third Apopka Art and Foliage Festival two thousand and twenty-five. And whereas the City of Apopka has long been known as the indoor foliage capital of the world, the Apopka Women's Club has expanded the foliage displays to attract a broader range of foliage enthusiasts, making the Apopka Art and Foliage Festival one of the premier festivals in central Florida. And whereas Kettleland Nelson Park is the site of the two thousand and twenty-five Apopka Art and Foliage Festival, providing a scenic and welcoming atmosphere for the thousands of visitors to the festival. And whereas the City Council and the citizens of the City of Apopka want to recognize and commend the Apopka Women's Club for providing this family-oriented entertainment for our community. And whereas the City Council invites all citizens to join the Apopka Women's Club in extending a warm welcome to the many visitors during the two thousand and twenty-five Apopka Art and Foliage Festival. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, by the virtue vested in me, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth and April twenty-seventh as Art and Foliage Festival Weekend." Joanna, you up? And there's, there's a, there's a, Joanna, there's a button right over here on that drop. I'm just so we can see you. There we go. Perfect.
I'm height challenged. Well, we're very excited about our sixty-third annual Art and Foliage Festival, which we could not do without the City of Apopka's help. We will be having fine art, fine hand crafts, creative crafts. We have school art from the local high schools. Of course, the foliage from different foliage festivals is absolutely amazing. And we have a, a fine array of food. So if you come out, you can spend the whole day there going through all of our vendors, all of our specialists, and all of our artists and crafters. If you have any questions during the festival, you can see one of the green shirt ladies, which we're all in the first two rows, and we'll be happy to answer your questions or guide you to whatever you need to find out about. So come out, enjoy the weekend, and have fun with us.
Thank you. Oh, I should, got the picture with, yes, 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 yes. You bet, absolutely. Landra, Landra, where is she at? Is Landra here? Where, where?
Landra? Okay.
Come, come on up. Yeah, oh, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. So I just wanted, I had an opportunity to talk to Landra at a luncheon, and she works for Scott Randolph, the tax collector, tax collector for Orange County, and brought up some interesting information, and I didn't know it. And so I thought, well, this is pretty important information that I think everybody needs to know. So I said, you know, she could come down and give us a real brief presentation on the Real ID Compliance Act. And so, Landra, thank you for, for reaching out to me and appreciate you coming out today.
Absolutely. And my name is Landra Womack. I'm actually a Community Relations Specialist for the Orange County Tax Collector for the last nine years. I actually used to live in Apopka, so I came yesterday for a meeting and got to see the peacocks, so that was really exciting. But on May seventh, Real ID Compliance, actually, it started in two thousand and five, and a lot of, and they started to implement it in two thousand and ten, where you have the star on your driver's license. If you do not have that star on your driver's license, that makes you Real ID compliant. You will not be able to enter some federal buildings, or you will not be able to board an aircraft. So you'll never get past security to get on your plane. So you actually need that Real ID compliance. So what we're finding is that people who have constantly mailed in their information and have not gone into the DMV, and trust me, we're in the twenty-first century. So I had someone tell me the other day that they went in, they made an appointment, they were in and out in nine minutes. So it is not what it used to be. But the information that you will need to make yourself Real ID compliant is actually on our website. It's also on the Florida Highway Safety and Motor Vehicle website. And if you, what we're finding also are a lot of elderly people. I just had someone literally call me on the way here to say their mother, who is a hundred years old, but she still travels. She actually goes up to Chicago to see relatives from time to time, and she is not Real ID compliant, and she has a trip scheduled in May. Please check on the seniors and make sure that they're Real ID compliant, and everyone that you all can spread this word to. The mayor has my information, and if you all need additional information, we'd be happy to provide that to you.
Landra, if you'll send us kind of a bullet sheet.
Absolutely.
Put up on our, our city website.
Definitely. And please look on our website as well, Orange County, O-C-T-A-X-C-O-L dot com. And it has all the information on there for you to get Real ID compliant. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council.
You bet. Thanks for coming out. You betcha. Okay, next up, we got, I just, I thought this was a pretty cool, it's the Day of Service, which is the Adventist School, Forest Lake Academy. Come on up, Pastor Marina. So Forest Lake Academy has been calling us over the last six or seven years and asking, hey, they've got, they've got a Day of Service, and asking us if we've got projects that they could bring fifty, sixty energetic kids out to help us accomplish. And so we, I've got up on the, the screen is the last four that we, that they've done for us, and we're just, I just wanted to, you know, bring him up, recognize, unless you've got a couple of students with him, and so Pastor Marina, why don't you kind of tell us, you know, how you got here, and, and what, what that Day of Service means to you and your, your team at Forest Lake?
Sure. Brian Nelson, thank you so much. I just want to say I'm compliant. I got my star on my driver's license. I just want y'all to know that. My students were, are you compliant? And I checked, and I am, I'm good to go. But thank you for that information. And thank you for having us. We're excited to be here. Forest Lake Academy, you guys probably pass it every so often, you know, up and down on the four twenty-nine, or heading in or out of Apopka. And we're excited to be here, and I'm thankful for Mayor Nelson. I, I bug him all the time. And Stacy, I want to do a shout out to Stacy. She's great help for the different projects, et cetera. And twice a year in our school year, we, we have a thing that we believe is important, and that is our Day of Caring. And we've, as you can see through the pictures there, Camp Uewa, Brian Dean Community Center, the last one was Davis Lodge, which was a whole lot of fun, a whole lot of painting. And it was great. And it, really what it is, is to encourage our students to live a life of service, not just at school, but beyond. When they leave Forest Lake Academy, it's based on our twenty thirty-five principle of service, and that is based on Acts twenty thirty-five, which says, "It is more blessed to give than to receive." So I have three young ladies that I, it's much, they're much more interesting than I am. They're seniors, they're all part of our, our service program. And our, senior servants, leadership program, sorry. And matter of fact, we have one of them and other students that have been part of the Apopka City Youth Council as well. So we're excited to have ourselves connected in one shape, form, or another with the city. So I'll have these young ladies introduce themselves and also share the value of serving their community, which I think is important for us to do.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Isabella Fernandez, and I've attended Forest Lake for four years now. And one of the things I love most about FLI is Day of Caring, a day dedicated to stepping outside of our daily routines and giving back to our community. I remember my freshman year when COVID was still floating around, and Day of Caring, Day of Caring was actually canceled. I was so disappointed because this was my first Day of Caring, and I didn't want to sit in another empty classroom because of Music Fest, where half of their students were already in a program. So I received an email saying that if you are in an art class, you can go help and do community service for Risen. And I was like, oh, wait, I'm in photography, I can do this. And, um... Forest Risen is an event Forest Lake hosts on Easter weekend that allows people to experience Jesus' last week. I immediately signed up, and from the moment I started, I had so much fun. It was a hands-on project that allowed me to be creative while also contributing to something bigger than myself. I ended up spending the rest of the day doing that, and I got excused from all my classes. That experience showed me that service isn't just about helping others. It's also about forming connections, growing as a person, and finding joy in giving back. One of my favorite Day of Carings was during my sophomore year, when we volunteered at United Against Poverty. I was with a great group of friends and was, and we were assigned a super fun task. It was throwing out garbage. We stood on a ramp with the garbage bins below us, so we turned it into a game. We challenged each other to see who could make the best or most creative shots, almost like basketball. It was such a simple job, but we made it fun. And at the same time, we were helping an organization that provides food and resources to those in need. Looking back on all my Day of Caring, I realized that these experiences have shaped my perspective on service. It doesn't have to be boring or feel like an obligation. It can be fun, rewarding, and even life-changing. It's about using our time and talents to make a difference, no matter how big or small. I'm so grateful to have been a part of Day of Caring for the past four years. It has taught me valuable lessons about kindness, teamwork, and the importance of giving back. I hope that every student at FLI continues to embrace this opportunity and experience the same joy that I have. Thank you.
Hello, Council. I'm Lexie Bernard, and, um, thank you. Sorry. In high school, community service not only impacted my personal growth, but also helped me as a student. Volunteering taught me time management and how to balance my academic responsibilities with going out and giving back to the community. It also boosted my problem-solving skills and the ability to work with other diverse groups that I had not worked with before, and helped enhance my collaboration and communication in my classroom setting. The sense of accomplishment I gained from helping others motivated me to stay focused on my studies, and the experience I had volunteering often inspired projects and other ideas for school assignments. So I am very grateful that I have been able to volunteer, especially in the City of Apopka throughout high school.
So as you can tell, it's truly, it's a value, and we appreciate the City of Apopka just giving us this opportunity. As you can tell, it's very special for them, our students. As they're leaving, you know, hopefully, they pass this along wherever they go. Whether it's here, City of Apopka, you never know, you know, they might be working, or they might take your job, Nelson, I don't know.
Sure.
Mayor Nelson. But anyways, God bless. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
We've got somebody from Davis Lodge, I know, is here.
Yes, he is. I did, I did see him.
Yeah.
I did see him. Thank you so much for the opportunity, and thank you again.
Eddie, you want to come up real quick? Because he, the last project, which was the Davis Lodge, that was, it was interesting. They not only painted, but cleaned up all the weeds around the fence lines, and the, the chaperones were doing the, the ledges.
The ledges, yes.
Till they got to the last one, and then found a, a honeybee nest in the, in the, in the wall, so they had to, so we have one still to do, right, Eddie?
We're, we're ready to go, man. I'm ready to go. I'm on high challenge.
I'm going to get with the, uh, after.
Please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Eddie Hughley. I worship for, I say, Davis Lodge, forty-seven, nine hundred South Central Avenue. And I'm just, just want to take a moment to, uh, thank Mayor Nelson and the Forest Lake Academy for coming out, painting our building, and also planning our garden. We started a garden in March. Prince Pollard Community Garden. Mayor Nelson was a big, big, big help on getting that started. Also, I'd like to thank him for our STEM program. He's a big part of that, and kids love him. They want to know when you're coming back to visit. Also, I would like to thank Reverend Smith, City Commissioner, for his participation and help. We surely appreciate it. And, uh, uh, I got a couple of dates here. Our mission is to give back to the city, give back to South Apopka, where we grew up at, and, uh... And, uh, so far as we're getting started, we're just getting started. The lodge as a lodge, uh, building up. But, uh, on April twenty-sixth, we have our freshwater fish fry fundraiser. Uh, beginning at about eleven o'clock in the morning. And all you guys are welcome to come out and participate. Uh, and on May seventeenth at eleven, we're having, uh, free hamburgers and hot dogs for the community. Uh, snow cones kid for the kids. And there'll be plenty of other activities. Uh, so we invite everyone to come out and be a part of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, uh, for allowing me this time.
Why don't we get a picture with the, the students and the Davis Lodge members? Yeah. Yeah. Thanks, thanks Patrick. You betcha. All right. Next up, we've got the, um, City of Apopka Meter Replacement and Maintenance Program update with Blanche and Gabby. Tag teaming today.
This was the twenty-four.
All right. Hi, I'm Gabby. I'm the utility program supervisor. I'm the one that has been running the meter replacement and maintenance program. So we have a little bit of a short background of what's been going on with the program and what we are going to do in the future. All right. So the program commenced with a pilot on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. It involved ten meters. With the pilot success, the official program began November twenty twenty-four. Aquometer was the contractor that we did use. They were provided a master list of twenty-nine hundred meters, exceeding the program goal of about twenty-six hundred meters to account for any data inaccuracies within the admin system or meter issues that could cause what are called skipped meters. Uh, the meter review process, pretty much any meter with a serial number below seventy-five were replaced under what's called the water meter exchange as they were deemed age. During the replacement, contractors also reprogrammed or installed new flex nets. Flex net reprogramming and installation. For meters not deemed age, contractors only reprogrammed the existing flex nets on site or installed a new flex set as needed. This is referred to as a water meter retrofit. Uh, there are a couple of outliers. If a meter was significantly damaged, they did replace it regardless of the age of the meter. Couple of key terms to know that you'll hear in the future and going forward. Flexnet is a two-way private radio network used to remotely manage reliable data. Uh, the flexnet is on the left-hand side of your screen. Uh, it's pretty much comprised of three major components. It's the smart point, which is your flexnet, your base station, which is your radio signal. And then your R and I program, which is essentially admins or census analytics, which provides us all of the data. So the easiest way to pitch rate is a triangle. You got your flexnet that goes to your base station, that goes to your utility billing system and then back and forth. Uh, meter exchange, those are meters that have been swapped out with new meters. Meter retrofits, those were meters that were not aged or damaged. These meters have only had their flex nets reprogrammed and/or repaired. A couple of things, skipped meters. We did have several skipped meters, but there is several reasons as to why. You have incorrect information. So when they go out to the site, maybe the meter number that we have doesn't match, match what is on site. They did not touch them. We will evaluate them. Galvanized piping, contractors unable to locate the meter, extensive trees, bushes that are preventing access to the meter, frozen curb stops or direct tie-ins. All of those will be handled internally. Uh, and that's just a photo of the potable meter that we use. All right. So how did we get here essentially? Why do we have so many aged meters? Meters are like any type of technology. They always come out with something new. Since twenty twenty, there have been massive delays in receiving inventory. With the increase of new homes, we were also in need of additional base stations to update the current base stations and to update the current base stations that we have. The base stations are our radio signals. So if you only have two and you've got so many people, you can bombard them. So we needed to update the base stations. Um, right now, your estimated lead times are about three to four months, depending on the inventory. So your, your basic inventory is your meter boxes, your meter lids, your flex nets, and then of course your meters. Now there are other smaller inventory items that the utility workers use, but we have plenty of those. There's not much of the lead time on those. Uh, the other factor is with the increase of new builds, we are having to split the inventory that we do have between repairs, general maintenance and new construction. Uh, so we're kind of playing a catch-up game, but at the same time, we're trying to do the best that we can and as fast and efficiently as we can in order to fix the issue. Uh, program data and future plans. Uh, so twenty-nine hundred meters have been reviewed for either the water meter exchange or the water meter retrofit. About eleven hundred meters were exchanged, meaning that they were replaced. And then there was eleven hundred meters that were retrofitted, which means they weren't aged, they weren't broken. They've had their, uh, flex net reprogrammed. In total, six hundred and forty-seven meters were skipped. As I stated, those are being handled internally. For fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, utility maintenance will be requesting funds to run this program again as they are able to focus strictly on the meters, whereas our guys, they do everything. Fire hydrants, leaks, damage, anything. So at least the contractor can focus a hundred percent on the meters.
Thank you, Gabby. Blanche Sherman Finance Director, I'm going to cover the utility building side and the customer impact. Um, at the beginning of this program, we sent out various alerts to our customers via our city newsletter, the utility building newsletter as well, and also on the city website. We provided a list of the subdivisions that would be impacted by the program. As Gabby and her team went out, they put door hangers out on the meters that were being replaced. They put those on the doors. We sent letters to customers with advance notice of high water consumption when we got the mid-month readings. And also there was an advance notice on the customer bill that reads as such, indicating that public service will be out performing ongoing water meter maintenance. How the estimated, estimates generated. Estimated bills are generated by several different factors. A flex net has not been installed where it can be digitally transmitted to the utility building for reporting. Normally this is where the new construction comes in. Flex net are not installed until the building accounts are transferred to the homeowner or the rental company. The property is located outside of radio tower signal, such as some of those out there in Lake County area, near the Lake County area. The flex net wire may be damaged or cut or data within the billing system is pending updates. Wow. Okay. In regards to the estimated bill, as a result of the meter replacement and maintenance program that is underway, we've actually, um, seen a reduction in the estimated billing from October through March, about two thousand one twenty-one, which is a twenty-nine percent reduction. Customers with the estimated bills have the following notice on their bill. It is, is, is noted on the bill until, of course, it goes from estimate to an actual read. And meters are read electronically on a weekly basis. There may be times when a meter reading is not available due to several reasons, which may include inaccessibility or non-functioning meter. If this happens, our system will generate an estimated reading. Estimated readings are based on consumption used during the same period from the previous year. Should your bill be estimated, an EST will be shown next to the readings and estimated will be displayed on your payment coupon. Also, we, um, encourage customers to call utility billing at four oh seven seven oh three one seven two seven with any concerns or questions. In regards to the base stations, our current locations are Lent Road and one of our new locations is Fire Station One and Harmon Road. Lent Road was installed around two thousand six, two thousand seven, same time for Harmon Road. The new one is recently installed. We do plan to replace the one on Harmon Road this year with a new one, and that's underway. Should be starting that on April eighth, next week. And we want to, um, add another one in a new location and we're working with Orange County, trying to get a inter-local agreement. And as, yeah, it'll be out there at the Lake County area that I just mentioned, the Orange County Emergency Vehicle Operations Center. Some of the future locations where we currently have towers, we just need to add the base stations, are the Public Works Yard Tower, Fire Station Two, Three and Four, and Mount Plymouth Road. In regards to staffing, we've come to you during this budget cycle to add positions, not only to utility billing, but also utility maintenance. We added an additional customer service specialist to help with the work orders and closing out the work orders. Cause Gabby has implemented a new process where she's documenting everything through the work order where it used to be email. So it's going through the work orders. And so my team has to go in and see, follow those documentations and we update information accordingly. And we also added additional two utility service workers to help with her program as well, with the meter replacement program. That's it.
Okay. Any questions for Gabby or Blanche? Mr. Anderson?
Have a question for Gabby. In regards to the base station, is there still a current delay on the base stations?
Uh, so two did just arrive. Those are to replace them. Um, but she actually knows.
That's, that's, they stations on that. We, again, the two that we, um, budgeted for, we have. One is going to be installed is next week. Okay? And we're going, that's the replacement one. Those were for replacement. And we're going to take one of those replacements and add it out to the Orange County site. But we can't do anything because we don't own the tower. So we have to get the inter-local agreement with Orange County. And once that's completed, they give us authorization and write and we can proceed with that installation.
And also the meters, do we have enough meters currently in inventory to service the current meters that need to be replaced now?
To be honest, no. So for my, um, for a meter, a pallet, one pallet of meters, you only get about a hundred and ninety-two meters. A reused meter is about a hundred and thirty-nine dollars. A potable meter is a hundred and thirty-two. A flex net pallet, you get about four hundred and eighty-six meters. Um, and then those prices change. If it's a single flex net, it's a hundred and forty-nine. If it's a double, it's a hundred and ninety-eight. When it comes to double flex nets, we're golden. We got plenty. But a lot of contractors are going towards single flex nets, um, so we need a lot more of those in. Uh, as of right now, I only have nine hundred and eighty estimated flex nets in stock because this is about a week old. Um, so no, and I have about fifteen hundred homes that currently need flex nets.
That currently, okay. And this doesn't include the inventory for the new construction that we're currently in the process of.
There is no separate inventory. It's all one.
It's all one.
It's all one. So every year I'll be asking for more. And I keep trying to play the game of let me order it, but sometimes when I order it, it's going to be in the next fiscal year. So we don't get that invoice until the following fiscal year, which means we go over.
Okay. So to be clear, we, with the current homes that need to be replaced and when a new construction home is built, how, what priority do we actually put those meters on? Do we put a new construction home or?
Yes. So they can't close a home without a meter. But we do not put the flex net on until a homeowner or a rental company takes over the property because the, uh, contractors keep breaking them.
Okay.
But they have to have a meter.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you.
And Commissioner Anderson, to that point, one of the things we were finding out, which we now are getting on to our builders about, they were moving ten houses they were working on and they put the first flex net in on house number one. What they were doing is taking the flex net off the valve number one and putting it on house number seven. And so now it's not talking to the tower. And so we were having a lot of those issues where they were just moving flex nets around, which if the flex net doesn't match the valve, it, it doesn't.
It would be the meter that they're moving. They're actually moving the meter. So if House A is ready to go, but House B asked for the meter, they would get their meter. And then this contractor, we've seen it where they steal it from this contractor and put it on this house. So what we've implemented is on the sides and on the front, we put the number that belongs to the house. And then if we find out that it's been moved, we issue a five hundred dollar fine. Cause I'm tired of it. It's messing up our system. You can't do that, guys.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
So back when we were doing the budget la- last October, there was a total of six thousand meters. How many have we? Of that six thousand, how many have been done? And then there was an entire list of different, um, developments that were affected. How many have we completed?
Basically, what I just shared, we, we, we have a reduction in that estimated billing of about twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-one. So it has gone down from that six or seven thousand down to like forty-eight hundred.
So we've done forty-eight hundred of?
No, it's reduced from the six or seven thousand down to forty-eight hundred. So about two thousand, let's say that.
Or still?
That we have, that are no longer being estimated.
Okay. That are no longer being estimated. So do we still have money, uh, do we still have funds to continue this program or do we have to wait until October?
We have funds in the current budget. They're using those funds in the current budget. Let me remind you that this is Fund four oh one. Okay? Where we had, you know, where we went through the exercise with Fund four oh one. So there, what she's sharing with you is next year, she's going to ask for those same funds and maybe more.
So four, so the Fund four oh one is the street funds.
No, that's the water, that's the utility operations fund.
Okay.
Okay.
And that has funds.
That's the fund where we had to go through and do some streamlining and we did the significant rate increase. Okay. And then we had to go through and do some cuts in order to stay within a reasonable rate increase. Okay?
So that's the fund, and sorry to interrupt, Commissioner Blazek, that's the fund that was running at a severe deficit.
It, well, from a budgetary standpoint.
It was a severe deficit is that fund? Is what this is being funded on?
We didn't want to continue that. We would have had a severe deficit from budgetary standpoint. So we had to stop that and that's what we were doing.
So we're still taking, we're still moving funds from the general fund to four oh one?
No, ma'am.
No, from the reserves, I should say.
No, ma'am.
No.
No, ma'am.
We're not continuing. We did it in the beginning of the year.
She was saying from general fund to four oh one.
But we did do that in the beginning of the year to balance this budget.
No, we didn't move any funds from the general fund to balance the budget. We did, we did the rate increase, but we, we cut items out of the Fund four oh one budget.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
So, um, are there additional meters available for us to purchase?
Yes. So, um, I do have a rep with Corin Maine and I'm constantly asking when can we get more meters? I'm watching the stock with the inventory staff, but warehouse is also very much bombarded and needs help. So I'm trying to help him by trying to watch my inventory and play the, the, the catch-up game essentially. So as soon as they have a pallet, I say, okay, put my name on it and let me know when it can be delivered. So right now I have inventory, but yes, once it gets to a certain point, I immediately call Corin Maine and I say, hey, put me in line for another one. Because we're not the only municipality that uses them. Um, so we do have the battle with like Water Springs and Orange County and anybody else who has senses. Uh, but yes, I am constantly on the phone with them saying, hey, put me on for the next pallet. Hey, how many do you have? Yes.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you for this presentation and the update. I, we definitely do appreciate it. And we had some questions during our, uh, Ms. Gabby, you weren't there, but, uh, had some questions during the agenda review. Um, I'll just kind of start at the top and work my way down. The skipped ones that are being handled internally, you said there's six hundred and forty-seven of those. That can range from, it's a, it's a whole facet of different issues. It's not one or two. It can be.
We had one that was in a tree the other day and it took us eight hours to get it out.
Okay. And that staff internally is taking their time and hours to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And on the weekends, we are putting in flex nets for the homes that have transferred from builders to new homeowners or, uh, rental companies. We are using the weekends so that we can use operations during the day, Monday through Friday.
Okay, understood. While we're on site for some of those, are we able to check and get in line with kind of the, the black, backflow preventers as well? If we're there and in the ground, are we able to overlap that process at all?
So the city doesn't actually. So the city doesn't actually own the backflows. The backflows are the responsibility of the citizens. The only responsibility that we have to do is make sure we maintain a program, and we send out letters reminding individuals that they need to test their devices. So depending on the type of the device, if it's just a regular one, it's two years. If it's a backflow conversion with a dual check, then it is five years. Now, if we do not receive your test, yes, we do have a contractor that is helping us implement backflows, and we're. Putting them on there regardless if we do not receive a test from a resident.
Because to, if we are not following what we're supposed to, whether the resident does it or not, we're the ones getting fined or in trouble for that.
Correct.
So that would be, I just think there would be some synergy there, save a little time, a little money, and keep the process going on both programs, I think would be beneficial. In reference to the new builds, you, you had stated it was brought up previously as well, that. We're sharing all of what needs to be going toward to our current residents, sharing that with our new builds.
Correct.
Are we able to put the onus completely on the new developers and just have them order their own? They don't get COs until they get their own?
I wouldn't recommend it, you're asking for an inventory nightmare, data nightmare, I mean, they're already moving our meters when we have them marked. I mean, just the other day, someone tried to wipe off the number to the house and put it on another house.
But I think that's the point, we wouldn't have to, we'd create our system and our database and say, okay, House A. What's the number you guys have, what did you install? Okay, that's in our database now, number B.
We could run a pilot and see, like, pick one of the smaller subdivisions and see how that works out, I mean, I'm not totally against it. I just worry about the backend for the data part, that's the only thing that I would be worried about.
Absolutely, and I, and, and I totally hear you on that, making sure the integrity of the data is as accurate as possible. And that we're able to track it properly, because I, I do feel that if we can put the new developers, put this into their hands more efficiently, they may be able to buy them. In bigger bulk, or have different avenues to get this done, in our similar timelines though, and, and to kind of work together versus us working for them.
Right.
And at the cost of our current residents, uh, not being able to get. The accurate, uh, numbers that they have. And the other thing that, we've discussed this a few times, and, and your team has definitely helped out, getting residents their proper readings, is that. They, residents see that their bills are paid, they, in their minds, they may not be reading line by line on these, uh, bills, and I know you've given where you've marketed or. Educated where, what's kind of happening that they may be estimated, but residents still think that their bills are paid. And then they come up and they have a couple thousand dollar water bill, and so that's really concerning to me that we continue to have that issue. And obviously, it's scary for residents, because this economy is not an easy one, so. I don't know how we can navigate this better, in the, in sense of helping our residents out, and not being in that position where they have a two thousand dollar bill, three thousand dollar bill, fifteen hundred dollar bill.
And again, um, this is something that happens as a result of being estimate for a long period, period of time. And as you know, and of course, with the ordinance that we have in place, we can go back and do the back billing. And in a fund in the situation that is in, we definitely need all the revenue that we can get. And we have debt covenants that we must adhere to as well, where we cannot waive anything. So as a relief to the customers, what we are offering them is a payment plan. Where over a twelve-month period, and we also are taking that consumption, and we're building it at the lowest rate.
Okay, and that is helpful, do we offer, so say that somebody gets a twenty-four hundred dollar bill, that's still two hundred dollars a month, on top of their. Current bill, uh, in addition, you know, so are there additional payment plans, are we working with people to?
It's case by case, yes, we are, we're trying to be consistent, and we are working, yes, we are.
Okay, and that's what I like to hear as well, just that, again, that we work for the people, I just want to make sure that they understand.
But we're consistent, but we're working with them.
Absolutely, okay, and then, so in reference to the, the broken meters themselves, let's say some, one is not giving any readings at all. But we're getting, and using the billing from last year. And, and I've used this example before, a few different, sorry, bouncing back and forth, uh. But I've used this example that there was a household of ten people that were in that house last year, and now it's only two, but they're getting the bill estimated for last year. How do we know if that meter is broken, that they're getting correct data once it's fixed, I guess, so we're estimating the bill. How do we know that that's the correct amount when it's fixed? How does that meter know properly that what it counted last month, two months, or three months ago when it was broken?
Okay, if the FlexNet is not reading, that doesn't mean the meter is not working.
Right, I'm.
So the meter is still running.
If the meter doesn't track properly.
Well, uh, that's when they have to come out and say the meters, we go out and do testing or something like that.
If somebody was in the house, and then somebody moves, when they leave, there's an ending reading. Then when this person starts, there's a starting reading, so they're not gonna be paying this person's bill, they're gonna be paying from the day that they started their account. Now, how the estimated portion is, since they technically go back, I, I can't answer that part.
Yeah, but we have the days of when that change over occurred.
Okay.
But what I want you to understand, that meter is still reading. And if it's not reading properly, sometimes we go out, they go out and test, they do a work order, and they go out and they check the meters to make sure it's reading properly. And they provide that read.
And that was gonna be my question, what happens in those rare scenarios where it's just not reading at all?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we are doing that. The, and we discussed this during my gender review, having a master list of what's been touched, what's been replaced, the timelines for all of it. Making sure that down the road, five years now, ten years from now, we know which meters have been replaced, exactly which ones they are, which FlexNet, FlexNets. Um, so I just want to make sure we are doing that in a somewhat accessible way.
Yes.
Um, I know you're working on that in the background, which you had told me previously.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then on the number side of this, we had originally discussed back on, when we were doing budgeting, and this is my final question or, or statement. Budgeting for last year for this fiscal year is that, it was around six thousand meters that were broken, six hundred of those. Uh, weren't giving any rings at all, I think, was, was what it was, and I think that went up to about seventy-three hundred, if the math is correct there, so it was about seven three, seventy-three thirteen, I think. So that, do we see that number getting any bigger, are we gonna experience any more, or find any more that are deficient, or is this? We've gotten the worst case out, we've tracked them, and now it's just gonna be building this.
Everything is going down.
Okay.
Everything is going down, with the program, we did see a slight increase in what we call the trip meters, but we expect that to go down as well. So everything, even the no reads themselves have gone down. So everything has gone down.
Okay, excellent, well, thank you.
A couple of things that we've also implemented is I do have designated people that are strictly working on meter replacements. That's all that they do, is they do meter replacements, and then on the weekends, it's strictly just FlexNet importation if we need it. However, once that list goes down, then we'll move back to the meters where that's all that they do.
Gotcha.
But we do have designated people that are strictly working on meters, and I've already moved the production, go back up to five to six, and a day, I should say. And if they have an issue, meters in a tree, meters behind a fence, whatever the case may be, they are to let our supervisor know. So that we can get a team out there to help them move it a little bit faster, essentially.
Okay.
Um, any meters that we cannot locate, because they're just older, or maybe somebody put something over it, or people love putting grass and, you know, mulch over, uh, meters. We have a list, and during the day, the supervisors will go out and try to find them for us, or anybody who's a senior staff that just kind of knows the city a little bit more. We have them going out there, so we're trying to play the game and move people, almost like chess, to get this done as fast and efficiently.
Excellent, I know your team's knocking it out too, I mean, it's, it's impressive to see we're, what, not even halfway through the year, fiscal year, and you guys are still doing great. So it's great to see, and, and I appreciate, I know it's a, it's a big task, so I appreciate your efforts.
All right, thanks ladies, appreciate it, thanks for your help. All right, next up, Border Lake update. Commissioner Smith, I know I left you hanging last, last commission meeting, but I, I think I got a lot more information for you this meeting, so. Matter of fact, we got a couple of. Okay, so we got kind of a three-parter, we've got the, the short, long-term solutions, as well as the, um. Is the grant proposals that we've got in front of us. So I just want to go through the, the, where we are on the short term, uh, then I'll go into the, the grant funding, and then we'll talk about the long-term solutions for Border Lake. So just as an update for the short term, um, Orange County staff is working on securing the emergency permit. They have also set up the gauge board in each of the lake to monitor the, uh, uh, lake elevations. Apopka has, uh, staff has secured, uh, the approval of all the residents for the right-of-way, uh, sign by each relevant resident. Um, we're now working on the last, which is the signature from Lumen. Finally got the right person, um, well, I think I do, and so, and along with, um, Cliff Shepard, we're trying to get an agreement. Uh, short term, and we'll talk about long term a little bit, uh, but they're, they're receptive, they don't see any problem. Obviously, it's a big company, and so never, never moves that fast, but we're hoping to get this one wrapped up very soon. Uh, Apopka Street and Storm Crew have dredged the bottom of an HOA pond to help with the upcoming pumping and restore the original pond volume, so that's the, the one on Blue Lake. Um, our sewer crew have used their CCTV system to inspect the connecting pipes, to make sure they were, uh. Able to be, uh, used. Uh, we've done sediment controls in the retention ponds, include geofabric, concrete blocks, and flocculation blocks. All our lakes, uh, will be pumped down to perspective seasonal average elevation of the last four years. Um, and just as a kind of a reference point, Border Lake will be, uh, pumped down about three feet, Lake Jackson, McDade. And Piedmont Lakes vary between one and two point five feet. Apopka staff, uh, used the funding approved from the previous, uh, city council meeting for the pump rentals and the fueling. Um, Apop, or Orange County has scraped the bottom of the pond that's next to Wake Abba Village, giving it not only more capacity, but a better percolation rate. And once the permit's secured, we could expect, uh, to start pumping within a twenty-four to, uh, tw- within a week, uh, twenty-four, seven. So what the, the residents of Piedmont Lakes were, were asking is instead of doing it eight-hour days, they want to go twenty-four, seven and get it done faster, so. Should take less than three weeks to get it, those lakes down to that level. Uh, the refueling will take, have to take place about every other day, based on that twenty-four, seven, um, pumping schedule. Next up, the, uh, Border Lake flooding discussion, the grants, um, state appropriation, we have two of them, uh, just to give you the background on those. Um, one's the, the Apopka Wake Abba Springs Regent, Aquifer Recharge and Flood Protection. Uh, the timeline was, was submitted in January of twenty twenty-three, approved by the legislature in May of twenty-three, and signed by the governor of, in June of twenty-three. The funding currently is being implemented, note, this request was submitted previously by the Florida Legislature on, on my, my behalf. In two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-two. Before we finally got approval and got appropriation in two thousand twenty-three, so we've been working on this, um. This, this problem, as you can see, since two thousand nineteen, right after the first storm that, that flooded the lakes. Uh, it's designed to permit, construct a permanent stormwater treatment system to reduce flooding from. Lake Page, Pleasant, Border, Cortez, Piedmont, Blue, Jackson, and McDade. In addition, modern water quality pretreatment will be installed to significantly reduce nitrogen and phosphorus and other pollutants in the stored stormwater. Prior to the use for irrigation and ultimately discharge back into the aquifer. It's a joint partnership between the City of Apopka, Orange County. Hopefully, we get Seminole County and DOT, St. John's Water Management, all to share in this. System. The county grant, the second county grant is the Apopka Wake Abba Springs Regent Alternative Water Supply and Flood Protection. Uh, that was requested in July of twenty-three, recommended for funding in July of twenty-three. The application was submitted August of twenty-three, the final RFI clarifications completed November of twenty-four, notice done in March of twenty-five. And once the thirty-day posting of notice has been met, we'll, we'll continue with the funding process. This is, uh, to hazard mitigation funds from Hurricane Ian to mitigate flooding hazards from storms. Project was approved by Orange County to receive mitigation funds given to the state for Hurricane Ian, and will be used to construct. A permanent stormwater treatment system, reduce flooding around the local lakes. And these two, um, grants, the first one is a state share of two point five million dollars, with a local match of two point five. And the second one is a, uh, federal share of three million, seven hundred fifty thousand. A local match of two million, basically three million dollars for a total of almost seven million dollars to go toward the flooding there at. Border Lake and all the surrounding lakes, I've also got with, everybody's got your eleven and a half, eleven by seventeen map showing the, 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 uh, the lakes that we are. Trying to keep at a, at a, at a, a level that, um, prevents flooding. And as you can see, we add the, all the lakes up, and it comes out to be. The overall percentage, um, if you take all these lake basins, uh, Apopka's a little less than, it's forty-seven point six percent. Orange County thirty-seven point seven percent, Seminole County ten point eight percent, and FDOT four point one percent. So that would give you kind of what we're hoping for our local partners and their match as we go forward in this, the, uh. Which is the next part, which is the, the long-term solution. And for that, I don't, I don't have a, any, a handout on that, but just to give you an idea. We, uh, we are working with Lumen and with Utilities Inc., we've got kind of a midterm, um. Uh, solution and also a long-term solution, midterm solution is to, there's a, the, uh, the Lumen property, uh, is about fifty point five acres. And if you know much about the, uh, when you try to rezone or do things with property, when you get above fifty acres, you have to go to the state for final approv- or approval. So it will slow down the process for any, any project above fifty acres, so. I've, I think I've got, uh, Lumen, uh, okay with taking, giving us the point five acres, which then would get them below the fifty acres. So it would be a small-scale amendment versus large-scale. What we will do is end up putting a pump station on the, it would be the eastmost side of Border Lake, which is still Lumen property. We would tie it in, the, the midterm project would be to tie it into the Utilities Inc. line. Um, and so we've gotten, uh, uh, also verbal approval from Utilities Inc. Or whatever the new name is, uh, to, to, to add right into their pipe, they have a sixteen-inch pipe runs from, from there, the Wake Abba area. All the way out to our, our Cleveland plant, so we'd be able to take the, the water, that excess water off border, put it into that pipe. And run it all the way out to our, our wastewater plant there at Cleveland. So we're, we're, we're excited about, you know, the opportunity there, that'd be the short term. The long term is to go ahead and run our own pipe, uh, would be a third pipe in that right-of-way, we have the, the Utilities Inc. pipe, we have the Altamont Springs pipe. And we would have a third pipe, which would be the Apopka pipe for drawing down the water from Border Lake. So that's, that's the hope, we, we've gotten, uh, Lumen, I think, is, is, is comfortable, uh, obviously, because of their, you know, big company. A lot of bureaucracy, just trying to get it to the right person on their desk. Hopefully, they can give us the short-term, uh, agreement, uh, hopefully this week. And then, uh, the longer term, when we, we still gotta work on how that, that agreement looks, but, uh. Everything looks good from, from the, the long-term solution, and, and I think the short-term solution, and so. I know that, you know, the, the county is, is, has done a, a yeoman's job on, you know, putting together the, um. The, uh, the package for us to, to be able to do the pumping, and so I know that we have Commissioner, um. Moore's here, if you'd like to come up and maybe say a few words about, are you good? Okay, so, uh, I, I feel like we're in, in, in a good spot, we just, uh, we get Lumen on board, get the short-term one going, we, we could have the, the water. The lake levels down, and all those lakes within less than sixty days, so, uh, with that open up for any questions from the?
First, um, uh, all the stuff, uh, that you read, if I can have some copies of that?
You have it.
No, this is the only thing that I have, the only thing that's here with the presentation.
Okay, oh, the, the, okay, sure.
Okay. Whole list of.
Okay.
I, I would appreciate if all the commissioners got that list. Second, so you're saying all of this water that we're going to be driving to Cleveland Street is going to the wastewater plant? Do we have the capacity at the wastewater plant to accept all this water?
Well, it, for now, we, we have, we, we're, interesting, we had a, a nice discussion last Friday, was it last Friday, I think, with. Okowi and Winter Garden, so even, even a longer-term solution, we're looking to help, uh, Okowi and Winter Garden. With a, uh, like a more, even a more regional plan to help them with their, their water needs and our, and for us to get rid of excess water, so. We're, we're still in the design phase on that, 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 that plan, we've got, obviously, we've got to get Golden Gem Pond up and running. We've also got Snowdon Road that we're trying to, to, uh, to have another fifty or so million gallon, um. Uh, storage pond there as well.
Do we have an update on Golden Gem, because I didn't think we were anywhere.
Well, no, I'm, I'm saying, we're, we're working on, we, we've got to get that, yes, that's part of the.
So my only concern is the wastewater plant that we have on Cleveland, do we have enough storage for it? For all the water that we're going to be sending?
Well, this will be until next year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what's the short-term plan, I'm sorry?
We just, that, that was the, yeah, yeah.
Well, what's the, we don't have, we do or we don't have capacity, even if it's next year?
For what?
What Commissioner Blazek just asked, do we have capacity to pump water there or do we not?
And I, I, I don't.
Is anybody from Public Services here, oh, Gladys here.
Diana?
There is, Diana, yeah. I remember at the, when we were at the agenda review yesterday.
Yeah, what we have is, on the long term, we will be using the Cleveland side. There will be an expansion, there will be a larger retention pond that can accommodate the amount of, of water that we're gonna receive. We still don't have those numbers yet to go out and, and, and start any, any type of construction. As to how big we need the pond. any type of construction as to how big we need the pond to be, but the area we have to do so.
And Vlad, you might have an idea or Diana, do you have an idea what like the, if we were talking about three feet on Border Lake, about how many gallons of water that is?
We have about thirty-five million.
Thirty-five million.
Gallons that we have to remove.
And, and do you know how many gallons of storage we now have even without, without Golden Gem? What's the?
No, I don't, I don't know.
With, with Northwest and?
Yeah, with the project that was, good afternoon, everybody. Vladimir Simonovsky. Yes, thank you. Vladimir Simonovsky, city engineer. Probably we, we should have about fifty-five million gallon storage at the Southwest, which is behind the wastewater treatment plant right now. That's under construction. My understanding is still it's, yeah, so, so it's not active right now, but it will definitely help with a long-term solution there.
Okay.
Yeah. So three to four feet of water taking approximately about in a year from Border Lake, there will be thirty-five to fifty million gallons a year. So that should be satisfactory to, to be able to move that water. Yes.
So, cause I think our goal is to, you know, and I've, I've told the staff is our, our goal is to get to one billion gallons of storage, which is about what we need to, for one year's worth of, of irrigation, you know, reclaimed water. If you take what we, we currently produce from wastewater, you know, you, you should, I think our, our, our use is about just shy of ten million gallons, ten million gallons a day. We're producing about three and a half. And so we gotta get, so we're looking at, so if you take this round figure, six and a half million gallons a day, what we need times three hundred sixty-five days, that's what you'd like to be able to store. And that's, that would be our goal.
Let me ask. So once we get the agreement from Lemons or whatever they're called now.
Lumen.
Then we're gonna go ahead and put the pumps in to begin to pump the water to Orange County Drainaswell. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, well.
So that's immediate?
Correct. Yes, yes. Yeah. And it'll, it'll be, the temporary pump station will be in a different location than the permanent. The temporary one will be close, it'll be, where it's going to go to is basically a marshland that will, so the temporary pumping station will be west of where the permanent one. Permanent will be right next to, right behind the Walmart neighborhood market.
Okay.
Because that's right, very close to the, the, the line coming from Utilities Inc. Does that make sense?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure that we were moving forward with the pumps and getting that to the well.
And I think Diana and, and Vlad, we're, we're ready to go. The pumps have already been secured. It's just, and piping.
Yes, we have already the requisition in and it's been processed by Blanche. So we are ready to go.
Okay.
Had a few follow-up questions there and it was some we discussed in our, our agenda review. The total cost just for the pumps, from my understanding, was about sixty thousand.
Yes, and Blanche is here, but yes, it's, it's close to sixty.
Yeah, fifty-seven.
Fifty.
Fifty-seven. Okay. And then it was discussed and I guess what was agreed to internally by staff is that we'll be having a third-party vendor do the refueling and monitoring of all of those.
It will be the same vendor that is providing the, the pumps and the hoses, the same vendor.
Okay. And we don't have a cost on what that monitoring.
Not at this moment. Not yet.
What's our timeline to implement this project that we agreed to?
As soon as we have all the paperwork in, the St. John's Water Management District staff has indicated they can issue a permit to us within twenty-four hours. As an emergency, as I said, it's an emergency operation permit. So as soon as we have a permit in hand, we're gonna move on.
Okay.
And start placing the pumps and the hoses and, and start pumping as soon as we can.
Okay. And it's Orange County that's running with the permit process?
That's correct.
Okay. And so St. John's contacts Orange County. If there's any deficiencies, Orange County contacts us. We issue any deficiency letters to Orange County, Orange County then resubmit it to St. John's.
Well, they are, they are the applicants, but we are closely working with St. John's as well.
Okay.
We are all communicating with Orange County, city staff and St. John's. We're all in, in the same conversations.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then in reference to the long-term plan, who on staff is spearheading these efforts?
It will be the new city engineer and, and Da, who's the Utilities Design Manager.
Okay. So, and not to make a pun out of this, but a lot of this seems like a pipe dream of getting it done next year. I mean, there's almost no, no way that's gonna happen next year. From your experience, do you think that timeline is realistic?
For, for the permanent?
Whatever we're discussing here.
Long-term, we're gonna do our best.
But from your experience?
Well, I mean, we, once we have all the permits in hand that are required, it's, it's a matter of construction and construction contracts, negotiation with construction contractors and et cetera, and getting the funding. Funding, as you see, is coming along. So I mean, we, we wanna make an effort to have, to have it done next year, definitely.
And so you're saying funding is coming along. No agreement has been put in place unless you tell me otherwise between Orange County, Seminole County, FDOT, St. John's, to help fund any of this, correct?
Yes, correct. We are working on that. We are working on that. So we, we did have a, have a meeting internally. The mayor's aware and he kind of shared with you the current status. So that's something that we're planning to work on to try to secure that local match. Okay, so.
Yes. And I, and I appreciate that. That just goes to the point, next year is not gonna happen. I mean, there's.
I guess it all depends on when we secure that, the funding and, you know, get the grants secured, get the local match secured and get the permits.
And none of these grants have been issued to us.
Not formally, no, not officially issued, but we are in the process of going through, we submitted the applications. We're answering all of their questions and everything like that.
Okay.
So we are anticipating receiving.
For this local match, let's say no other municipality wants to share in this with us, or it's a less than preferred amount. How are we paying for this?
That's a conversation we'll have to have because it's a stormwater project and of course stormwater does not have those funds. The only one that has any adequate reserves is a general fund.
So you, we would have to borrow or not borrow, we would have to remove from our reserves under the mattress to help fund these projects.
Correct.
Okay. And then is there any, do we have any kind of timeline for Golden Gem at all? I know that was already asked, but any funding requests, any, any, are we anywhere with Golden Gem? Cause that's a massive, massive pond.
Right. And I know we talked about it when, we talked about the, the rate study that we're gonna try to factor something in there to help with the Golden Gem repair. And I did recently have conversations with the consultant and that is being factored in there. We just have to see what the results of that is in regards to the impact on the rates.
Okay.
So we, we trying to, you know, incorporate a plan in the five-year rate plan.
Okay. And we're also looking, looking at it legally too, because we don't think that the, there, there was, there was a problem either with, with installation and/or the, the fabric itself.
So liability.
We're also, I know we have a consultant looking at both the installation and the fabric to see if, if it was installed properly and if it was the fabric that we had, we had had under the RFP.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. Did we have agreements with St. John's Water District for the long-term?
No.
We don't have any agreements with them.
I mean, they, they, they have not said it's, it's outside the realm. I mean, they, they'd love to have that in their, into the reclaimed system. So they'd rather have it going into, into our, 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 our plant than they want, than going into a drainage well. Drainage well is their last option.
But if the plant doesn't have the capacity currently, we would still need to add on to Cleveland, any of ours, correct? No, no water. We don't have capacity for this and it's in our current state, we couldn't do this today.
Here, let, let me speak a minute. I'm Glenn Brooks, Water Resource Manager. You're asking about the plant. The plant is permitted for eight million gallons a day. We're taking three point seven million gallons a day in the plant right now. I'm saying on permit between both plants, we have there eight million gallons a day.
This doesn't have anything to do with, with.
I know.
Nothing to do with wastewater.
They're asking, they're asking the question.
No, no, but it's, it's not, it has nothing to do with the wastewater plant. Cause what we're gonna do is we're gonna treat the water at the site, at, at Border Lake and it'll be access, it'll be available from that point on for reclaim, period. It, it will never.
So it's not going to the Cleveland plant at all?
It's going to the Cleveland plant, but not to the, the wastewater facility. It's going to the Cleveland plant, which is where our, we have reclaimed tanks, which, and, and ponds where when we, when we, we have.
I think what the mayor says.
Wastewater, when we have wastewater. It's all treated, yes.
I understand that, but again, we don't have any storage.
But do we have storage at the Cleveland besides not the wastewater?
I think as the mayor was, was referencing, we have spoke to the City of Winter Garden, City of Okowi. And there's a demand that they have to reclaim water. And so if you're looking, yes, we have. Somebody asked the story, we'll go, how much stores do we have? If we had Golden Gem, we know we don't have that yet. You have six hundred and two million gallons of storage with all the facility that we have, if we had Golden Gem up and running.
Well, we don't have.
Three hundred and forty, just take Golden Gem off, take three hundred and forty-nine million off of it then. That's what the whole.
So what's the actual number that we have then?
So, so.
Just.
So that, that gives, I don't know if my math is correct. That's a.
But do we have any agreements with Okowi or with the garden to do what we're doing?
Working on that now.
Just met with them last week.
Yep, just, I think.
I think Vlad just said fifty million gallons is what we're taking off of there. If you do the math, that's nine hundred thousand gallons a day, what would become of re, extra reclaim. I think we can handle that if that water's treated. Again, if we're not talking about putting that load in on your wastewater plant right now. I think.
So when it gets, where is it getting treated?
It will get treated when we get to that point. The long-term solution will, will treat it at Border Lake.
What he's saying, keep in mind, there's surface water, there's different regulatory requirements there. What the mayor's saying, do we treat it there before it comes there? That mean it, it meets the standard to go out? Public access.
It'll have to have two things.
And we do have the capacity there at the plant to move that reclaimed water. We can move up to sixteen million gallons a day based on what we, we are pumping, pumps that we have there, so.
So we would need, I need, we would need new property at Border Lake that we own for a plant, correct? A treatment plant of some kind at Border Lake.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a smaller pumping station. They will have a filtration system with it. So the layout, the layout of that is pretty minimal.
So, but I, I'd need it, that needs to happen somehow. We need to get that, which is not in place yet. I mean, this is a multi-multi-million, million dollar project and then a multi-year project as well, correct? I mean, years down the road, even if we start today, this is still. To get all of the players that we're referencing in here, the other ones that are not listed on here, Okowi, Winter Garden, Orange County, Seminole County, FDOT, St. John's, private partners. It, it, it's a lot. I just, I want the real, the realistic view of, for our residents that this isn't gonna happen overnight. And to do it right, it's, it's gonna take time. And we need to increase our capacity as well.
Well, I think what is going on here is that, that from my understanding, this is a step in putting the different parties together so that a long-term solution can be reached. I don't think all the players is actually, I think there's, of course, obviously, there's a lot of research and a lot of agreements have to go in place, but there is, from my understanding, there is, we have to have some type of plan.
Thank you.
So I think this is the stuff in the plan. We want to doomsday the whole, you know, the whole city. But it seems like there is a plan in place. Of course, the plan can change, right? There are certain things that can delay the plans, but at least we have a plan in place.
So I, and I appreciate, I do, plans are, are great. It's over-promising and underperforming. Let's just set realistic expectations to our residents.
And I hear what you're saying there, Commissioner Nesta, but I want, it, it's not fair to ask people and say, can you give me a timetable? What is it gonna be this? Cause I mean, they, they can't answer that right now. There's some unknown. We, like you said, we don't have some of that. I mean, but to say, if we sit here and say, yep, we're gonna have that year or some, there, there's some unknowns still.
Absolutely. But that's the point is it was stated a year. My, the residents we represent are gonna say, Commissioner Nesta, is this gonna be done in a year? I need to know, yes, absolutely. Our engineers are, are right behind this all day or no, we're looking at two to three.
And, and I think it would be premature for us to say that right now until, I think these guys will be able to dial that in and give us a schedule, a timetable. It's fun to say to be able to get to.
Absolutely. No, and I totally agree. I think that's the point. Let's just build realistic expectations and it's okay to fluctuate. I just don't want to put in a steadfast, in one year, we will see this, that's not happening.
Well, I just want to know, make sure that we're not just badgering and beating them over the, the staff over the head when they really don't know. And this is just an estimated plan. So I, no one wants to be in that type of pressure. Just, they don't, they don't know.
Well, and, and again, that's not what I'm, I'm saying at all. I just want to make sure for my residents and the residents we all represent, they have the right information as well. You guys are only bound to what you're bound to. So that I'm not badgering you guys at all. It's just give me the right information so that I can then echo that same information to our residents.
Just the presentation.
Well, my, my concern is that we get these pumps going.
Yes.
And get that water to the well before the rainy season.
There you go. That'll happen, Commissioner Nesta. All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, we're gonna, we're gonna, we've got two consent agenda items. Is anybody, anybody either from the public or from the diets need to pull any of those? Either of the two consent agenda items?
I just need to do the first one, please.
You want to do what?
The, the first one, need to discuss the premier lawn maintenance contract.
Okay. All right. Look for motion to approve the piggyback contract for the signed terms, Lake Jim Farms LLC and Lowe's Home Centers LLC. So kind of motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries and has a. Execution of the Premier Lawn Maintenance LLC, Blanche?
I think Commissioner Nesta has some questions in regards to that. That is basically a contract extension for six months with Premier Lawn Service. State statute allows us to do that. We realize, yes, that the expiration date was March, what, twenty-sixth, but according to our legal counsel and their opinion, we still can proceed with the contract extension.
And that is my question, Attorney Shepherd, is this contract did expire last week?
Right.
So it's not an extension of a contract. It would be a renewal of a contract or a new contract. We can't renew or extend a contract that expired. Correct or am I, is that incorrect?
No, we, we, we looked at this based on the purchasing statutes that apply and your own purchasing policy and you can extend it, no problem. And we, we actually, I don't know if I can pull up the email, but we, we've analyzed it for you.
And then so the start date of this extension, the six-month extension starts last week.
Yeah, March twenty-seventh.
And contractually, contract law, that's okay. We're, we're covered under all of those provisions.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Look for motion to approve the execution of the contract extension for the signed terms of Premier Lawn Maintenance LLC.
It's moved.
Kind of motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries and has a. Uh, we're gonna take up item number seven, Jacob Smith. I know that we've got our labor attorney is on the, he's up and, and ready to go. So Joe, if you want to come down and just help us with that one, please.
Mayor Commissioners, Joe Patton, Human Resource Director. So the mayor asked me to bring this forward to the commission to review and the vote on Jacob Smith's severance package. I did put the information in your packets and we did talk about it these past couple of days. With that in mind.
Bob, can you make sure he's up?
I'm sorry?
I, I was just talking to Bob, make sure that Jeff's up.
He is.
Okay, he, okay.
He is, he's on, he's online. I just seen his picture.
Okay, sure.
So I know some of you had some questions concerning the contract, so on and so forth. So we asked Jeff to be here today. He is out of state at the moment. So you may hear some music in the background. I don't know, he's in a lobby of a hotel and if you had any questions over the contract, he's available.
Any questions for Joe or for Jeff Mandell?
Well, I guess the question is why is this in front of us at this point?
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and just read you a, a statement. I, I this was not what I was looking to do, but I, then some things said that weren't accurate, so I just need. this was not what I was looking to do, but I, then some things said that, um, weren't accurate, so I just need to clear the, the clear the air. I was made aware of an editorial written by Jacob Smith in the local tabloid and I quote a portion of his email that states, in Jacob's own words, as for the Doge letter email, I'm not sure what that refers to. I receive over a hundred emails daily and it was, if it was a letter, I never received it. If it was an email, it may have been blocked by our spam filters. If I somehow missed it, the mayor receives the same correspondence from the state or the league of cities that I do. Usually I get a follow-up email for any urgent matters with deadlines, but I never received anything of that sort. If this Doge email is legitimate and the mayor was aware of it, why didn't he simply ask me about it? I would like to respond to what Doge letter and we could have figured it out, just like I've handled everything else. So here's my statement to that, that editorial. First, let me be clear, relieving Jacob of his duties by stating a lack of communication was not my idea of, of the way I hoped this would end, but my goal was not to hurt him in any, his, his quest for another government position. With lack of communication as a reason, he could explain his way out of being released from Apopka without losing credibility. But this editorial forces me to respond to his inaccuracies. I was not trying to ruin his career, but it became evident early on that he wasn't capable of running a city the size of Apopka. Now, to his quote about the Doge email, here are the facts. Neither myself or Blanche Sherman, my finance director, ever receives, received the Doge emails from either the governor's office or the league of cities. Two, I found out about the letter from a state political blog that had nothing to do with internal communications. Three, Jacob received the executive office of the governor, EOG Doge email at six thirty-four PM on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Jacob read the email from eight oh two to eight oh four on March nineteenth. At eight oh four AM on the nineteenth, he tried to Google Doge but was unsuccessful. After trying to, to Google Doge, he deleted the EOG email. On March nineteenth at eleven thirty-five AM, the Florida League of Cities email about the importance of the Doge email, about the Doge email was delivered to his inbox. At eleven thirty-eight on the nineteenth, Jacob opened and deleted the League of Cities email. That's what happened.
May I have a copy of that for the commissioners? And the only thing I will say about this whole thing with the email is that when he was terminated on Friday, in less than ten minutes, the news went out. Um, I did contact Jacob on Friday evening because I was so, I was stunned by his termination and asked him, does he know why he was terminated, what was the reason? And he gave his version, besides this, what's going on with the newspapers and social media, is that the mayor had walked into his office and simply said to him, you're done. And according to Jacob, what he said was, for about ten minutes, he was trying to ascertain why he was being terminated and what was going on. And the mayor did not tell him why he was being terminated, he was unaware of the Doge or the EOG. That only came to light three days later when the Apopka chief wrote, uh, an entire article that the mayor had shared why he had terminated him. So I wrote some emails to, um, our attorney because I feel that as elected officials, we must conduct ourselves in the highest standard. I feel that, uh, our chief administrator was not given the courtesy, the respect or the civility of letting him know on Friday when he was going to be terminated, why he was going to be terminated. His termination has been playing out on social media, at the Apopka chief, at the Apopka voice, and that is my concern. That we are not holding ourselves to a value that is expected of us as elected officials. And that is for me the issue, not that he didn't see the Doge or if he saw it or if he deleted it, that is the, that is the chair's right and as the mayor to terminate an employee, that he feels that something so important was not addressed by his chief administrator. But for me, as an elected official, where we all depended on our chief administrator to always be sort of, go between our staff and the mayor's office, that he was unaware of why he was being terminated. We need to conduct ourselves at a much higher standard. The message we are sending to our staff is, if they do not do something, if they are not aware of something, that they will be fired. A few months ago, I asked HR to provide me a list of our personnel that has left city employment. Granted, I got nineteen pages since two thousand eighteen. Of course, I would say forty percent are seasonal, but many have been long-term employees here. Many have resigned, many have left because they retired, and a few had literally reached out to some of us to say the real reason why they left. And I think it's just time that we start to conduct ourselves. We should not be terminating employees and then going out to the social media or the newspapers to give them the reason why we're terminating them or why the mayor is terminating them. The chief administrator deserved a much more civil termination than what he's getting. And now we have in front of us his service package. We have a contract from him, let's honor his contract, it is a contract.
Well, I, I didn't start this argument, he, he's the one that went to, to the media, I didn't go. I was happy just to, to let it, let it go into the night, but when he, when he responded and with these.
He responded because that is what he believed. But if you had, if you had on Friday sat him down and said, why didn't you, did you get the Doge? Why didn't you respond to it? This would not be playing out in the media, so what happened was, he came out first because of what he believed. He couldn't, he couldn't articulate a reason. And then after him was the article from the Apopka, uh, from the Apopka chief, and then the Apopka voice has since followed. So I don't want to take away one thing, he sat here for nine months, ten months, and he tried to do the best that he could with what he was working with. He did, I mean, let's not just forget the night, you know, the, the old saying, you do ninety-nine things right, the one thing you do wrong, that's what everybody remembers you for. I'm just saying that on Friday, when he was terminated, he should have been told why he was being terminated. Instead, it went into social media and went into the newspapers, and that is not how the commission should learn why he was terminated.
You're learning right now, that's what I'm giving you. So I just wanted to set the record straight, I, you know, wish it hadn't ended up this way, but I can tell you, of all the directors who've ever left here, I, that I've been, when I've been here, I don't know, I'm almost sure that we've never had one that went to social media about their, their career here, and I'm, there was some, there was a couple of city attorneys that sure didn't like the way they were treated here, that never went to social media to, to explain that, so I, I mean, I'm happy to go through the list.
That's just hold ourselves to a much higher standard. We are elected officials and I wrote that I respect the office that each of us represent to include the mayor's office. Let's hold ourselves to a much higher standard than what we are doing with, uh, our chief administrator right now. It's not, it, let's not continue to demean his presence. He worked here for nine months, ten months, he did a good job, he did the best that he could. You had the right to terminate him because of the Doge letter, that was very important. Um, because that was something that was coming from the governor's office. It is, it happened, he's gone, but let's not continue to demean his, his, his role in our city. He was hired by us, he was hired, recommended by the mayor. We reviewed his co, his contract, we reviewed his resume, uh, back in June of last year, and we considered him to be the proper candidate to take that job. So let's own it. And let's just go move on, because he's not coming back, but let's honor his contract.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
I'm done.
Mr. Anderson? Okay. Mr. Smith?
Ready to move on.
Okay. Mr. Nesta?
Yes, I just want to make a couple of comments here that now, yesterday, tomorrow, I will not be making any comments on the status of an employee in any capacity. Dr. Patton, with industry norms of handling employees and, and things of that nature, there's usually best practices that we put into place. Starts with, if there's any type of infraction that you feel has occurred, a verbal warning of some kind or discussion. Um, did that take place, was there a date of that discussion?
So let me just say this before, before you respond, I just want to make sure that we are not putting staff, um, in a position, it, I, I think it's unfair to put any staff in a position. We all are, are aware, mayor made a decision, some agree, some don't agree with the decision, how things was handled, but I just want to make sure that we are not going to put another staff member in a position to answer questions about someone else's actions that had nothing to do with them.
Because if, if, if we go down that path, it will, it will happen, I can assure you that.
So I just want to make sure that he's not going to be asked questions that he can't answer.
All right, go for it.
Yeah, I, I'm not worried about that, thank you for your comment though during my discussion.
Well, that's fine.
Was there any?
Commissioner, I can't answer that because I wasn't aware of anything until, uh, Jacob called me down to his office and said to mayor, let him go.
Okay, so there's no formal, informal, written, any of that, if I ask for his file.
That's what I'm aware of.
Okay. All right, and then in reference to this employment contract, it's a contract, so I, I don't know why we have it in front of us. We need to just honor what's in there, we don't need to revote on it, so I'm not even sure it's appropriate to vote on it. It's a contract, we are bound by it.
Cliff, what do you think?
I think this is a great time for Jeff to weigh in, but I, I agree with you, the contract is fairly clear on what should happen, but I would defer to the labor lawyer.
This is Jeff Mandel, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Um, uh, yes, I agree with, uh, Commissioner, uh, our council member, Vasquez, and that's the, it is a binding contract and one that we should honor.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jeff, appreciate you hanging in there with us.
My pleasure.
All right, thank you, thanks, Jeff. All right, go back to business.
It's a business item, so now we need public comment on this.
Okay, public comment, anybody want to?
I, uh, met Jacob after I'd been sending him emails and copying him on council emails and sending him voicemails and leaving messages for him, uh, personal. And I came up to him at one of the meetings and said, I hadn't heard back from you. And then, as we did the previous city administrator, many of us had not received and made comments in here and online, that we had never heard back from him. And he says, well, who are you? And like, he hadn't been in any of our previous meetings, he hadn't seen me speak. And so we met and I brought him a huge stack of emails. And he said, these go back clear three months since I had been hired. Well, that was July seventeenth and he hadn't been hired but June. So that wasn't three months, so that was, should have been my first indication. But I went in and, uh, thinking that someone had, and he said that someone had, he, he guessed who was doing this to him. That he had packages that were being hand-delivered that he wasn't receiving and emails and texts from other people that he wasn't receiving. So he grinned and said, I, I have a feeling I know who this was. So I reported it to the police to let them know something was happening here beyond just, because voicemails wouldn't disappear like a firewall would happen and packages wouldn't disappear like a firewall. So I mentioned it in July, not a report, but a mention. Then, um, come last month or the month before, um, he said the same thing. I asked him, you haven't returned my calls, have you got any messages from me? And we talked. And then, a couple of weeks later, same thing happened. And he said, oh, um, I don't see any. And we had had many meetings in between, many talks and correspondence. Well, I talked to the police again, twice, once before he was dismissed and then once right after, because they said he can't get fired now if I report that there's something happening in the city. So detectives came and went straight to IT before they met with me in person. And they saw the Doge letter and they saw the Florida City's letter, League of Cities' letter and how he deleted it. So, um, I went down the next morning and I saw it myself. And all the unread letters in his mailbox, that he had never opened, many letters, dozens of letters, that he, emails that he never opened. And that my emails and other people's emails were sitting in his box, that he said he never got for the whole nine months. And yes, he opened some of them because he returned some of them, but the others he didn't take care of. And some of them were copies of letters to y'all that he didn't acknowledge. Um, so he did get the Doge letter, he did open it up that next day, he did scan it for four seconds, went up and confirmed that the email was correct and hit delete. The Florida League of Cities' letter, he scanned for ten seconds and deleted right then.
Leroy Bell, Apopka. You know, for twelve years, my office was the jungle of Central America. Every night in the jungle of Central America, every night it was a full moon. Every monkey in the jungle thought he was Elvis Presley. It seemed this way every time it come down to the election season. While we're going about this Doge letter, I would ask everyone to go back and read the letter what Doge wanted. The Doge wanted five items to be responded to by April the eighth. If you read the Bell response to that. to that in the Apopka chief, he made a statement that he was a little pissed off that this letter needed to be responded to by April the eighth. And Jacob Smith wasn't going to do it. It was going to be him and Blanche. Ask yourself why. We wouldn't have got to this if it wasn't for part of the commission. If the commission had let the ref- a ref- a forensic audit went off the way it's supposed to be. And we would have seen the underlying crap that go on in this city, but we took in the election season, brung in a new commissioner, moved from Democrat to Republican to rubber stamp to get rid of this. But what happened is this, the mayor couldn't get rid of this Doge letter. In this Doge letter, I'm gonna tell you which three it is. Look at the last three. The last three explain why. You can't say no to the last three that they're asking for. Things gonna be turned up upside down and you'll find out. He'd have found out. He closing in on him. And the only way that he can keep a leg up and keep things from coming out, he got to do things underhand. And he knows that he got rubber stamped to keep this, but he can't keep that. Because once they find out a little something, they're gonna open Pandora's door. And we got setting in the wings. Same thing going over, trying, trying to take his place. We got another candidate trying to come in and get in the same seat. We got Elon Musk way out there in Wisconsin, trying to buy voters, trying to buy rubber stamps like he have. But this candidate coming in trying to buy votes with Easter egg hunts. Wake up, please. When they say woke is day, this what they want you. They want woke gone. They want you asleep. And just ask yourself. Ask yourself. If you had or did what you said you were gonna do the first time, when you had a five to zero vote for the forensic audit, then you turn around and backed out. But guess what? Governor Ron Dukas thing got you.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane, Apopka here. Uh, this is to me one of the examples that I've talked about before with the city manager, the finance director, police, fire, and public services should be a group decision, not a mayor decision. Regardless of who the mayor is, I think it's something that should be done as a team. Uh, they're serving all of you. I can't speak for anyone else, but I found Jacob Smith honorable, respectful, and responsive. I never had. When I left him a phone message, I got it back. And you all know I'm one of the more, more regular communicators. Even when I just copied him on something that went to you, he had the courtesy of contacting me and let me know, hey, look, I received it. We had a discussion on it sometimes. Met with him twice in his office. Honorable man. Uh, it's a shame. I don't, day to day and day out. I don't know what it's like working with a gentleman. All I know is my experience was outstanding. Thank you.
Good afternoon and hello, everyone. Sylvester Hall, Rock Springs Ridge. You always hear me say, when we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth to the point the truth doesn't matter. And that's what we doing here. So you wonder when I quote those, it's for a reason. So I'm, I'm, I'm sitting patiently waiting on the change. When we hired, uh, Jacob, he came with great out of boys. The mayor couldn't stop praising him. Now, less than ten months, he's a derelict. And so all this abnormal that's going on in the hiring process. And then we try to bring it back to a normal situation. And we try to talk about it with the intellect when it's abnormal. He deserved his contract. I can't speak on his day-to-day activity because I wasn't a part of that. But I sit here and watch when we all praised him. And then if I'm in a leadership position, and if I'm the mayor and he's my s- 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 uh, city administrator, when the mayor say, he don't come, he don't come visit me. Well, he wouldn't have a choice. Weekly, he would have to come and update me every week on what's going on in my city. It's only common sense when you're talking about leadership, one-on-one. How you gonna have a city administrator, you don't have a scheduled time that you see him on a weekly basis to keep a track of what's going on in your city? It don't make any sense and it defies common sense. This is what really when we if you got a bunch of three-year-olds that are untrained, two-year-old that are untrained, you leave them in your living room, you go outside and you chill, take a break, talk on the phone, you come back and you see your living room all destroyed. And you like, what are you doing? Do, that's what you expect. So everything that we see here is what I've been trying to tell you. But we all, when it, when it keep taking place, when it keep taking place, we all sit around and we talk about it and we try to make it like it's, 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 it's a normal situation. It's, it's, it's very abnormal. At some point, I don't blame you guys because you are acting out your character. But at some point, the city, the voters, the residents of this city has to be smart. They has to get engaged. Twenty-eight thousand registered voters can't sit the process out and think we're gonna get a better city. It can't happen. He deserve his contract. Pay him his money. And at some point, at some point, when we talk about character, when we talk about integrity, at some point, we gotta stop being a hypocrite. We say all these beautiful things. I love you, but then I go out and cheat on you. We all say these things, it, it's, it's an honor to have you here serving us. And then we create them like dog mess going out. Destroy his name, destroy his character. That's very sad and I wouldn't wish that on nobody. Yes, and I expect and I demand more of you guys when it comes to any county employee because he's at the very top. So what message do you send to everybody else? Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
Virginia Street, twenty-one nineteen, Palm Vista Drive. I, um, I'm confused about, um, the purpose of HR in Apopka because um, being forty years in, um, management, we had processes and guidelines. We couldn't just fire somebody without cause. And if they were showing signs of not being able to perform their job, we provided them a way of um, putting them on an improvement plan before an extra firing or release. Um, I do understand um, the reason sometimes people do make, uh, career-ending uh, decisions and that, that was one, you know, evidently. But, um, I do agree with uh, Commissioner Valdez that, um, he shouldn't find out in the newspaper while he was fired. If not, on the way out, he should have at least had something in his hand so that he would at least know why he's fired. So I don't, um, think that is a ethical way of conducting business in the city of Apopka. My concern now is, yes, we need to pay him his contract, most definitely. That's not even a question, but who's next? Who we gonna put next? What are we gonna do to protect the next person in? I mean, if we don't, we just keep doing the same thing, running around the same mango tree, no improvement. But we have got to have some kind of guidelines upon um, these directors and these, these people that are in high leadership, um, that can possibly fall into that same category. If we don't, we'll do the same thing over and over again. We won't have anybody, just like the mayor is deep in the water, uh, the border lake thing. You shouldn't be that deep into those things. That should be delegated to somebody else. And you should be, um, getting reports about what's going on, you know? So that, that, that means that there's a lot of micro-management going on. Um, we have got our leaders that are here, um, that are few. Um, they gotta be terrified. I would be terrified if I was the leader. I would be terrified. Am I gonna be next? Am I gonna do a career-ending, uh, move and not know what's going on? But in HR, there needs to be something in HR to protect the employees and not just protect them, but also, you know, protect the, uh, city from having any uh, lawsuits or liabilities that may come, uh, in effect of this. So those are my concerns there. It's, it's that if we don't do anything different or put any processes around it, it's gonna happen again. And, uh, we should pay him, uh, whatever is due to him because that would be rightfully so. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, moving on. Business item number one, Willow Run Platte. Is that Jean?
Good afternoon. Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the Willow Run Platte. The subject property is situated on the southeast corner of Plymouth Sorento Road and Abbey Lane, approximately fifty-six point seven acres in size. The plot is to create a hundred and ten single-family lots, two stormwater tracks, four landscape buffer tracks, three open space tracks, as well as a, a six maintenance and access easements. Track A is a thirty-foot right-of-way strip along Plymouth Sorento Road, reserved as a dedication for future road widening. The plot is consistent with the Willow Run major development plan approved by city council and the construction site plan approved by the Development Review Committee on June first, twenty twenty-two, and July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, respectively. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the plot. Therefore, the recommended motion is to approve the Willow Run Platte. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean or the applicant? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this?
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. Uh, similar similar to what I've syndicated past, we've got a problem with infrastructure. You have to look at no further than all this new development that you guys continue to rubber stamp that Orange County Public Schools continues to rubber stamp. One in three of our schools here in Apopka are over capacity. Granted, one's only over by half a dozen, but goes up to over two hundred. This is a hundred and ten units. There's three hundred and thirty new residents in Apopka or thirty new students. Where are they gonna go? We need to be looking at that. You look, we listen to water. We know we've had the water meter problems forever and a day. And we're rubber stamping it. Oh, well, no, we're gonna take care of the new developers because they say they want X number of meters. That's buffalo chips. We gotta be taking care of the residents we have now with faulty water meters. I had a three hundred dollar water bill that I just got through paying because, guess what? Reclaimed water doesn't push out enough pressure, so I had to replace my sod. And unfortunately, I, I didn't listen to my, I didn't talk to my neighbor before, but he said, oh, Rod, I just run regular water on the lawn because it's cheaper than the reclaimed water. Wish I'd have known that before I did that. We have to look at it, one thing after another. We have flooding. We have Golden Gem Pond. We have utility rate increases unprecedented because we haven't done our preventive maintenance. We haven't put systems in place yet. We keep adding people. Uh, people and buildings. I don't know if you've driven around and taken a look around our community. There are hundreds of apartment buildings, thousands of homes going in the ground right now, and we don't have the infrastructure in place to take care of what we have. Guys, listen, look at, I sent you something about the aspect of how Orange County maybe danced around the moratorium. You need to look at it. You need to implement it. This is getting old.
I want to come, uh, commend my neighbor, Rod, because we have all talked about this, but he's been very diligent about this. And so when I look at things like public comments and, uh, why they at the end of the, end of the road per se, and I look at what's going on here. You have made plenty of cases of why should we should start looking at putting a halt or slowing this down. Can you imagine coming out of Park, Park Camp? You got the middle school and you got the elementary school. What kind of traffic that's gonna look like in three or four years? Little Tulane? Can you imagine what that's gonna look like? Can you imagine five, six years from now, trying to go in and widen the road out when you got all that kind of traffic? And it's like, no, nobody care. If you're a parent, you go to drop off your kid, you gotta wait in traffic for thirty minutes. And then once construction start, it's just prolonged. This is what we go through. And, and we normalize it. But I, I get frustrated, not at you guys. I get frustrated at, at the citizens. I was at a meeting and there was voice in the same concern. And I challenged to come to last Wednesday meeting with me and voice these concerns. Hardly nobody showed up. So that's why you keep doing what you're doing. And I'm trying to educate the voters and the citizens. You gotta come here. You gotta stand up. You giving this pounder up here your tax dollars to provide a service for you to keep you safe, to keep your kids safe, to provide, provide a safe neighborhood where you can go and conduct your life and live in the American dream without any oversight whatsoever. So I look for this to keep continuing until we have an, uh, election here. Because the character is who you are. Your reputation can be fixed with a little camera photo. Reputation, but your character is who you are. It's your picture, who you are. And that haven't changed and, and you, and you have proven to me that you're not willing to change that. Regardless of what facts are being brought to you, you have proven to me you're not willing to change that. Somebody say, well, the guys that, uh, when they come up, they grandstand. Well, this is how you deal with grandstand. Whatever that individual was telling you, you go look at it and see if it has any merit. If a wino come up to me and half drunk, half slow and say, hey, your house is on fire. Man, get out of here with your drunk self, or I'm gonna go look and see if my house is on fire. See what I'm saying? So all you gotta do is go- So all you gotta do is go investigate what is being said, what concern, and then come back and let the individual know, this is what we investigated. This was the issue, this is our take on it, and here's our corrective action. And then post it. It's just that simple, that individual will go away.
What what's I got to do with Willow Run?
It's got to do with Willow Run character.
That's not, that's
Character.
Character's got nothing to do with Willow Run.
Yes, because you guys are are making these, are making it
For it or against it?
I'm against any construction going in to say, I I I'm against that. Yes, and I still got fifteen second. That's what it's got to do with because you're the one keep rubber stamping it like Mr. Olson said. That's what it's got to do with your character. And who are you for? Are you characters for the citizen or are you characters for the developers? Cause once the developers get their money, they're gone and they don't care.
Okay, anybody else? Close the public hearing, look for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Especially since this one is fairly near my home. Um, I do wanna say that I appreciate um the dwellings per acre. Um, it's two dwellings per acre, and I hope it stays that way because I know a lot of times when you approve something, um it gets altered. So I hope this one doesn't get altered. Um, for um fifty-six point six seven acres and then um a hundred and ten lots, that's a a big offering. When you look down at the other ones and uh they're saying five duplexes an acre or I assume that's what the DU stands for, or um fifty-four single units on nine acres. Um, that's outrageous. And uh we're looking at um on Rock Springs across from the McDonald's. We've got um ten acres there and they're wanting to propose uh townhomes on that property and commercial. And they're having a meeting on April fifteenth, about it, at the um Froggers. So um I do appreciate that this is much better than the others. But um so I'm more welcoming it than all these others that have been approved. And uh but I still don't want, I want trees and I want land. But this gives a lot more um water seepage, water absorption and aquifer and trees if they don't strip the tr- the the land and not plant trees and plants and that they keep it Florida friendly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the plat for the Willow Run subdivision.
This is just the plat.
So gotta motion my Commissioner Velasquez.
Exactly.
Looking at my Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
A opposed motion carries nams. Next up, Eden Crest Phase One Platte. Amir?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Amir Hamza, I'm a planner. The applicant has submitted a plat for Eden, the Eden Crest subdivision for uh Phase One, uh located east of South Binion Road and north of Boy Scout Road. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the property that will consist of Phase One. The property has a future land use of residential low and has a zoning of PD planned development as shown on these maps. Here's the Eden Crest Phase One Platte, which uh Phase One has a, it consists of one eighty-four lots and Phase Two will uh consist the rest with the total of the entire subdivision will have a total of uh three hundred lots. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the Eden Crest Phase One Platte. At its meeting on March eleven, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the Eden Crest Phase One Platte. The recommended motion is to approve the Eden Crest Phase One Platte and staff and applicant are available for further questions and comments.
Any questions for Amir?
I saw the couple of questions. We discussed this in our agenda review, but just wanted to be public and and make sure that everyone's aware because it's a big project in this area. This will connect on the north side to Mott Helen, correct?
That's correct, yeah, it's a public or right-of-way, so there's no gates. It's gonna be uh
Full, full access?
Full access, yes.
Okay, understood. Has the, does that HOA need to approve that in any way or is it?
No, it's, it was approved in the CSP. So, yeah, this is just the plat.
Okay, got it. And then on the south side of this project, and it's not specific to Phase One itself, we've had some residents on Boy Scout Road dealing with an easement, um access easement, things like that to some properties up there. Um, this project had to build a pretty large, tall retaining wall and the easement itself is in Orange County, so this isn't specific to Apopka, but it is something that um if I can still get staffs help to kind of work through with this resident to to get them um what they need to make sure that easement's still in place.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll let the applicant wait, well, well, let's get one more, I guess, we got one more. Come on down. And then we'll let the applicant come up and respond.
Leroy Bell, Mott Helen. It would just ask uh about the HOA. Uh, it was, it was, it would talk to you about HOA approved or?
He talked to us.
Well, well, I'm talking to you, man, answer the question. What what was the HOA told about this? Matter of fact, where you were talking about the entry, the entry is gonna be coming in off John Road used to be off of Beersley, I mean off of, off of Binion Road. Once they came in and put in fifteen new homes on Martin Meadows, which I was the first one to buy a house on Martin Meadows, they moved the county road from out on Binion in on Beersley that passes Martin, pass uh Blue Meadows Court. And I I would like to know, what are you guys approving? For number one, because number two, they already building houses and stuff in there. Secondly, we talking about all this drainage that you're going through for pond and pond and pond and pond, and we just went through a debacle for six or seven months, which clear, what that is a a Clear Lake Estate. Clear Lake Estate is underwater right now. When when the people came in talking about the water coming up to their back doors, the the ju- jungle gym, the slide, literally up underwater. Somebody need to put a pause on this crap and come out and see what's going on instead of sitting there. Like you just said, a few minutes, people need to come in and see you. The residents need to see you guys out on some of these properties just like when you was out begging for people to vote for you. Get out and see the people because you're running the people that living in these neighborhood. And secondly, my HOA president, for some reason, to me, should recuse himself on both sides because he work for the city.
Uh, Sebastian, the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken, uh we had it with at VFW. I was president, Commissioner Vel- Velasquez was president. If if this is the same developer, developer?
No, this was um
I think that one was for the uh Pon Can, the Palucci Acres.
Right.
I believe so.
Right. Well, what is the same thing is still relevant. What we, what what we discussed, and it was very, and that's why I was saying, if that's the same one, where is that HOA? Because they had a lot of concerns and the VFW was pretty much packed. But here's my thing. I love developers coming in because Pop- uh Apopka is 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 long overdue. You know, we're in the twenty-first century. You look at our downtown, it looks, it sucks for us to be the second largest, it really sucks. So, yeah, man, I said that. Cause you, look, I, forty years, you can ride through downtown of Apopka and it pretty much look the same. Forty years, go back fifty years. But what what I was saying there with with the uh at that meeting, I welcome developers and what they have presented was, I think, was beautiful for Apopka. But it has to be a mandate when you come in and you doing your developing, you doing all your your research, you doing all your analyzation and all that good stuff. How is it gonna affect that local community and how is it gonna affect traffic? Traffic has to be a part of that package. What needs to be done, it needs to be done then when the development is going in, not ten, fifteen years or five or ten years later, it need to be done then. And when these developers come in, if you do that, we are, we're not creating a problem, we bringing in beautification and we're bringing in hopefully as much as we can protect the citizens where we're not bringing in a traffic nightmare. So if we do that with every project, just like you, when we evaluate everything else, let's make that traffic, let's make those roads then, not four or five years later, let's make that then. And if we do that, I think we'll have a better output. And then when you look at some of the developments that are going in now, like uh Leroy just said with Clear Lake, it's still underwater and we don't have many conversation about Clear Lake. It don't die down now, there's no news press now. But I know that Ms. Griffin, if you go up, walk out of her back door, she could be snatched by an alligator. I've been on the site. From her wall is six feet and you got water right there where anything could be hiding underneath there and grab her just like that. Or any kid walking by can grab her just like that. And so when we look at these things, okay, clearly, how did we get there? The other project, the the the
We're talking about a plat on
So when you, Amir, with all due respect, yes, with all due respect, this is what I'm talking about. What I just said, you bring in the the development, bring the developers in. But the traffic, make that part of the package and make it then, not four or five years later. Make it then, not four or five years later. And I think we'll do better. And then the oversight with this drainage, because we've dr- bring in developers and we don't have an oversight now, when they leave, now we got a drainage problem. Remember, some some communities never had a problem till a new developer came in, they did this, now they got a, they got a uh dr- uh they got a a flooding problem. Because the engineer wasn't, wasn't, we didn't do all our checking balances. So at some point, we gotta look at, if we can't slow it up, let's let's improve the process so nobody get left out. Thank you.
Virginia, Vir- okay, thank you. Virginia Street, twenty-one nineteen Palm Vista Drive. We have had several conversations about having a moratorium. I mean, that's a hundred and eighty-four units we're talking about, not ten, not fifteen. If everybody has two cars, that's three hundred and, I'm doing the math, three hundred and sixty-four, you know what I'm saying? What is it gonna take for someone to create a motion to do a moratorium on anything bigger than fifty units, bigger than ten units? Can can we do anything like that? I mean, I know we've had the discussions, I've been sitting here listening to Cliff saying what other people have done, but I haven't seen us do anything. So when are we going to do something? We don't have the water thing down pat. You know, we don't have the school thing down pat. So I I just, I mean, uh we're repeating the same thing over and over and over again. I guess we're just gonna ride it till the wheels fall off, you know? But something needs to be done with these big developments, especially these big developments coming in. These big dogs wanna come in, we're not ready for it. I mean, one plus one is two, we're not ready for it. We don't have the schools, we don't have the water ready to handle a situation. We don't have the, we don't have the leadership to handle big things like this right now. So what is it gonna take to do the moratorium? Who has to do that? Who who brings that up? Nick, can you?
Yeah, we brought this up a few times um and gone through it with our attorney as well, kind of walking us through the steps of what that looks like, provisions that we've put in place. I've I've brought up a few times and there's different ways to skin this cat too. Um, that doesn't hurt the landowners, but also promotes our residents that are here. That's always been my biggest concern, um having been for here since the nineties, so I I've seen it grow. I just, I'm not sure that others that I serve with have the same appetite I do.
So I I get, I'm curious to see what the attitude is with each commissioner about where we are with doing these large developments. Do, I mean, just um, I I'm I'm interested to know where we are. Where 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 are your thoughts about these large developments like this, Commissioner Smith?
I have no comment.
Huh?
No comment.
No comment. Okay, Commissioner Velasquez, do you have a comment?
It would just be an opinion and at this point, um, you know, we rely on our staff. We rely on Development Review Committee. We rely on the Planning and Zoning Committee. Um, when it comes to us here, it has gone through a process between the staff and they know exactly what our city infrastructure is. And um when it comes here, what it allows is for the public to come out and share their concerns. But you have, uh, we have heard from the public about a moratorium.
Okay.
I kinda echo, excuse me, I kinda echo the same sentiments of Commissioner Vasquez is we rely on staff and experts in regards to whether the our, the city can handle that type of development. And at give, at any given time, if staff say it can't handle it, then at that point, that's when I agree with the the professionals. So I think that we kinda do know some of the concerns in regards to infrastructure.
Commissioner, could you speak closer to the mic?
Okay, yep, I'm I'm directly to the mic right now. Okay, so I'll speak up, can you hear me? Can you hear, okay, you hear me? Okay. So that's one of those things where I think we'll continue to monitor to make sure that with each development um that staff, if there's any type of concerns that staff may have, that we, you know, look at those concerns. But at this point, if they go through a Development Review Committee and if they um feel um in their professional opinion that the um development in our city can, infrastructure can handle that, we only can
Okay.
rely on the experts.
So we really just come in here just to rubber stamp it and say that?
No, 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 not at all.
Because I have never seen one, I have never seen one go back, never.
Well.
You know? So I don't know what the
And let me just say this, cause I spoke with a few um residents in regards to, you know, developer rights and landowner rights and things like that. So um there is a thin line where we have to make sure that we aren't putting the taxpayers at a burden where we have to litigate um developers and landowners that, you know, do try to develop on their land and we stop them. So I know that the it, the, our attorney was looking at um some verbiage in some different municipalities in regards to what we can do, but I think we all have to kind of agree with what that looks like and kind of what is it that we're trying to do. And I think we have not reached a, reached a consensus on exactly what is it we're trying to do.
Okay.
And what we're trying to stop.
I mean, I I know my time is up, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave. But the only thing I wanna know is, what is it gonna take for us to stop? I mean, what, when will we hit the wall? You know, and then be in a, in a reactive mode to try to fit something instead of being proactive and trying to uh do it wisely? That's, that's all I have. And and uh, you know, since things are like going on like this, I I will not come up again and say anything else about any developments because it's it's a waste of my breath. Because it's, I mean, this has already been decided, no matter what the citizens say, it's gonna get the, it's gonna get the stamp.
It's not a waste. Please keep doing it.
Rod?
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six Rolling Hills Lane. I'm not gonna repeat everything I hit earlier. This is four hundred and twenty-five new units, that's twelve hundred and seventy-five new people moving into the community and a hundred and seventy-five students that will pour into Orange County Public Schools. In the time I've been here and looking back, uh, well, five years ago, we hit it at fifteen years. In now twenty years, that Orange County Public Schools looks at and says, we approve this development, we don't based upon census. The one time that they said no was five years ago, and two of you sitting up here now, along with the three other commissioners, approved it. Overruled the aspect of the school saying, hey, no, this is too many, and we know they never say it's too many. Cause as long as they can put a trailer on campus, it goes in. We continue to prove, yes, it's based on the land development code, you gotta follow the law. You guys have the opportunity to make some changes in that, so we can have our growth. I'm tired of us sticking a Band-Aid on top of a Band-Aid, on top of a Band-Aid, with all the flooding and all the issues we have in this community and bending to new developers. Again, people should have the right to develop their property, but it needs to be done staged, stepped, and we need to have the infrastructure in place to take care of it. You know, we continue to be reactive, we need to get proactive and get in front of this. Thank you.
Luke, you wanna come down and maybe talk maybe more globally, I mean, you can talk, but I don't, really don't think anything was you know, site specific, but you know, talk about roads and stormwater and those things.
Well, the one site specific one was the HOA. And if we can kind of walk through those timelines or who was discussed, approvals, things like that, so that we understand where-
Thank you, yeah. Uh, Luke Laston, Appian Engineering, two 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 one Lee Road, Wood Park, Florida. Uh, Commissioner Nestor, thank you for asking that. So when we originally did this project, we worked on the PD rezoning, we did a community meeting. We reached out to Mont Helen, there's actually two roads that were stubbed out in the Mont Helen development to the south, there's John's Road, and then there's another road, it's a roundabout currently. But on the plat, it was stubbed out, um, to the south for future connectivity. Each of the plans, the final engineering plans, as well as the plat indicates future connectivity to them. In coordination with Mont Helen, we met with, we did the community meeting, we also met separately with the HOA and the residents specifically on that roundabout, and they just asked us to please not connect. And so the agreement, the agreement that we made with Mont Helen was that we would not connect to the one on the east, the roundabout. That is, it's currently developed as a roundabout, but it's intended to extend through. We would not connect to that, we would only connect to John's Road. The reason we did that, uh, for that agreement is if you go up John's Road, there is no houses where John's Road connects the main entrance from Mont Helen to the west before it connects to Benio Road. It, there's only a, uh, the open space park area, so there's no, uh, houses that were passing by. We actually offered to gate that connection as well. It is a public right of way. So we were told we could not, and I believe that the Fire and Police Department act, wanted access to that, and, and really, it makes sense for interconnectivity, you want that. But our main access over, our traffic report shows that ninety percent of the access will go through Benio Road. In coordination with Orange County at the time, since then, the city's taken over Benio Road, but at the time this project was permitted, it was through Orange County. When we permitted, we permitted a roundabout, it's currently under construction right now, that roundabout, we're doing a very large scale roundabout at the entrance. That is gonna, that's gonna take just shy of ninety percent, I think it's eighty-seven percent of the traffic goes through that roundabout because the Mont Helen entrance does not have a signal or a roundabout or anything else, so you have to wait to leave to turn left or right on, um, uh, on Benio Road, specifically left is much tougher turn, uh, especially if you wanna go down to the south to, uh, any of the expressways and the new, um, on and off ramps that are coming on. And so that's why we proposed a roundabout at, at the entrance, and so that's why it shows roughly ninety percent we going through there. So we don't see the John's Road access as really a, a, a huge trip generator, but even if it, even if people do go through that access point, it doesn't pass any houses. If you look at that access road, there's no houses. There's only a open space track before you get to John's Road, and then it connects down to this as a secondary access point. No, there's no houses in Mont Helen off there. Um, there is a, a development off of John's Road as well, there's about fifteen homes, but there are no homes in Mont Helen that are, uh, off Everett.
When, when you're saying that, you mean they specifically don't access-
That don't front John's Road or the main road off Mont Helen, correctly.
You're still passing part of the community on Melrose Courts.
There's actually no point of Mont Helen's, and there's the new addition that's around fifteen homes, that's your show, right, that connects off John's Road. Correct.
So you're passing that street, but you're, what you're saying is that you don't have a-
There's no driveway connection.
Directly on John's Road.
Correct. Well, there's no driveways from our connection on John's Road to the access point of Mont Helen. But again, we're, it's just a secondary access point to us. We, we voluntarily offered to gate it. We were told that that's not an option. And honestly, I, as an engineer, I will tell you, I agree with that. You should have interconnectivity, I think we connected, should have connected to both. But that was the deal we made with Mont Helen, was to not connect to the east one, only connect to John's Road.
And then, do you have general dates of when those HOA meetings took place?
Um, I can give you those. Again, this is just the plat, so this is all, it's, it's already built, to be honest.
Well, no, and I've been out there a few times with the residents that live to the south.
I can give you all that coordination, I can give you, actually, we submitted to the city plans with it gated because that was some, uh, a request at one of the community meetings, we said, sure, we're fine gating it, we don't see it as much of a traffic. So I can show you those plans, and when they were submitted for public record, I'd be happy to email them.
That'd be valuable, just so I can articulate that to our residents as well.
But again, I agree with your Fire Department, Police Department, that interconnectivity is important, and it, and it does help and benefit the community as a whole, it helps your ISO ratings, your response times and all sorts of other things. And so I agree with leaving it public, uh, access and full access.
And then Luke talked about-
Uh, for the, one, one other thing, Commissioner Nestor asked about was the access on the south. There, when we originally did this project, when we did the title report, there was a seven and a half foot wide easement along the southern border, which is south of our proposed access off of Benio Road. That seven and a half foot strip ran over three properties. Uh, it was five hundred fifty feet long. The actual dirt road is split on the property boundary, so that's why it's only seven and a half feet wide, it's a fifteen foot area of easement, seven and a half on this property, seven and a half on the first two properties coming off Benio that are actually in Orange County, they're not City of Apocca. Pardon me, I'm speaking. So those, those four properties, right now, they access off that dirt road that is, again, had a seven and a half foot easement for five hundred fifty feet. We looked and saw that the actual use of the dirt road was around thirteen hundred linear feet. So we provided an additional eight hundred and eighty feet of a seven and a half foot strip. So we took into account not only what the existing easements and the rights were, we said, okay, we understand that there's only five hundred fifty feet, that's legally obligated, however, they've been using this for years, and so there's, there's all sorts of legal precedent that they, we need to provide that. So we extended that seven and a half foot strip along our southern boundary for an additional eight hundred and eighty feet, so it's fourteen hundred and thirty feet long from the Benio Right Of Way to, uh, make sure that everyone still continue to have the existing access that they had pre-development. And then we moved the retaining walls outside of that, so there's nothing within that seven and a half feet. In addition, a couple of the property owners have, um, said they had some issues with potentially with some of the dirt road and had some questions. There was a washout at one point where the silt fence, which happens during construction, admittedly. Um, and the contractor offered to repair that, and we were told, no, not access to the property. We have email receipts of that, and we have, I can provide those to you. In addition, we offered to mill, uh, take the asphalt millings and compact on that dirt road to help stabilize that roadway. And we were told by the, and we have emails as well, by the properties, that they do not want us to access their, their property. So I'd be happy to provide the emails and provide them to public record.
I think that'd be, yes.
And we also provided a hold harmless letter, saying we'd be happy to do this, if you sign this home hold harmless letter, and we'll provide, we will take the asphalt millings from Benio Road, put it on that dirt road, just to help stabilize it for, to coordinate with the Fire Department and Police and just have better access points.
And that was my concern, is the, the access for our first responders to get to a couple of those homes back there, cause I know there's a, a manufactured home much further back.
Close, that's why we extended it that eight hundred and eighty feet beyond the five hundred fifty that the, that legal easement is in place. We put the additional eight hundred and eighty feet on it, just to make sure that all, the existing dirt road was covered. But yes, it was manufactured, that's the fourth property on the back.
Correct, yes. So yeah, if you can send me copies of those, that would be valuable, so I can understand in its entirety and kind of what we're dealing with there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Be happy to.
Was there a transportation study done for this?
Yep, there's a transportation study done, it's a total of three hundred and one lots. I'd also like to clarify, I am not the developer, I'm an engineer, uh, engineer of record for this development. Uh, but there was a transportation study done at the time. Uh, the original transportation studies showed a different distribution of traffic, and then when we went to Orange County, they requested the roundabout. And that's when the majority of traffic got pushed through Benio Road or the entrance, because, um, the, the thought and the logic is that a lot more people will go there because the roundabout does push more traffic through than having to go through Mont Helen. So we thought that as a, as a benefit to the Mont Helen residents, that less people will be going through that secondary access point. But I'd be happy to send you that traffic report as well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
The only thing I'll ask, uh, Amir, um, I saw in Willow Run, you put the project, how many lots? Well, Jean Sanchez did, and the density, but then in Eden Crest, you didn't put a total here of, so that it's, it's on the agenda, that should-
One eighty-four is the- Yeah, one eighty-four is for phase one, and the total is three hundred lots, yeah.
So I've, I've, I've got one eighty-four lots, and I've got, uh, Mr. Rod Olson said four twenty-five lots. So this phase is how many lots?
So as Amir mentioned in his presentation for the record, Bobby Hall, this is a hundred and eighty-four lots, this is phase one. As, uh, Mr. Clausen mentioned, the second phase, the entirety of the development's three hundred and one units. As you ever recall, this was a PED, I think this was approved back in twenty twenty-one before the city commission. So the second phase, yeah, the total's three hundred and one. So the second phase will be the difference. Three hundred and one for both phases, you're only considering the plat for phase one this afternoon.
Right, which is a hundred and eighty-four.
One hundred and eighty-four, one hundred and eighty-four.
Okay, so this is this plat right now.
Yes, that's correct, it's just the plat.
Thank you.
All right. Look for a motion then to approve the plat for Eden Crest Phase One. Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Can I just get a two-minute break?
Sure, all right, we'll take a couple-minute break, and we'll be right back. Call the meeting back to order. Our next item is, uh, four one oh one Golden Gem Road. Jean Sanchez.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve four one zero one Golden Gem Road Residential Major Development Plan. So they have a little bit of a, a little park and um some passive areas and a trail around their stormwater ponds. Uh, Madison Oaks is another one that's been approved um and entitled in the uh Wild Oaks Development. Um, they did have a little bit of amenities. I thought there was a pedestrian connection to it from the north as well, so that they can tap into the open space areas. Um, and I think that's all that we have for now.
So as, and just to restate, as we go through this and start seeing more of them come up, that's where the green space uh requirements are gonna be met.
Correct.
Throughout this process.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any other questions for Jean? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this?
Rod Olson, thirty one fifty six Rolling Hills Lane. Uh, this is fifty four units, hundred and sixty two residents, eighteen new students to fill are already one in three schools overcrowded in Florida. Uh, I've given you more than enough information with regard to justifying a moratorium or partial as the Orange County has done. Uh, why is it we as current citizens, current taxpayers, people that put you into your seats, are having to deal with more school overcrowding, flooding, traffic, and increase in expense because of our lack of infrastructure and take care of our everyday units? We've got to do a better job. Let's get a moratorium in place. It does not stop anything that's currently on the books, but it can stop or slow anything more coming on the books until we can get our legs underneath it. We need to get our legs underneath us. Thank you.
For the record, if we're gonna continue to to stamp these developments, let's just look at putting prop, constr- uh uh transportation. Let's look at the transportation. Let's look at the schools. Let's look how it is gonna, how we're gonna be affected. Make that part of the package. And then let's approve it with those plan in place. Simply to, if we need to increase uh a widening of road, let's do that while we the 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 development is being done, is being built. Let's do that. It's a, it's a really a simple fix. If it's gonna overcrowd, let's look at that, because what we, what we're doing now, we're at a point where we keep allowing more developers because we don't wanna punish them for the ones that we already approved. So if we don't prove the thousand homes, now we get to this one, we say, hey, look, let's, let's look at the construction. Let's look at the transportation. Let's look at how it's gonna affect traffic. Now, it's not fair to this developer. Because now he's saying like he's been punished for all the ones that we don't rubber stamp. But at some point, we gotta say, okay, enough is enough. Because if we keep doing this, we know we headed for a, a nightmare when it comes to traffic in our local, local cities. It's one thing to have it on the highways, but right in the local city? So that's what I'm saying. Look, let's just be res- let's be responsible. And you know, we can, we can change as we go. We can improvise. Although, actually, when you, when you bring a developer in, if the roads need to be widened, whatever it needs to be to make sure we got adequate traffic for our citizens, that it won't be a traffic nightmare, because most of you haven't been on Boy Scout when the traffic gets backed up. Most of you haven't been on Pine Cam when the traffic gets backed up. So then you look at if we ever have to have a emergency s- eh emergency uh uh escape route, what kind of nightmare that's gonna pro- uh provide for the city? So we gotta look at all these things. We, we, we just can't be, you know, hey, look, we give it a little thought and boom, it's gone. So I'm just asking you to be responsible. Rod, he's just asking for you to be responsible. Everybody that come up here just asking you to be responsible. Because it's an easy fix if we're working to serve the people of the City of Apopka. It's an easy fix. We give you the resources. Now, do you have the will to do it? That's what it all comes down to. Do you have the will to do it? Do you wanna do it? Resources is there. Get with the developers, widen out the streets if they need to be widened out. Look at how it's gonna affect our schools, and they say at some point, hey, we, we, we gotta do this before we can move forward. Thank you. Anybody else? Will disrespect me. I pay part of your salary. And you will pay attention without a face grinning or getting out, walking out. Now, what you need to do, you need to ask your lawyer about a law, what they call what is it called when you take and you buy some property and you be disenfranchised from that property unfairly enriched? When you, as a taxpayer, pay the city or the county to take care of certain parts, you got the event that run by, even if, if no water going through those pipes, I got to pay you your taxes because they're running past my property. And I'm connected to it. Now, what happened to you as the city when you approved a project? And that a project a impedes on my property and caused me property damage or property loss unfairly enriched? And I tell you what we gonna do. The last gentleman just got up and told a lie. If I get up here and I speak on everything else, and I get up and not speak on my property about a meeting that they had that I knew about and didn't go, that's a lie. And just like I said once before, the fifteen houses, that and probably these also, as soon as it start impeding on their property, it gonna be enough lawyers up in there to open up a branch office. Anybody else? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve the major development plan for four one oh one Golden Gem Road. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Parks and Rec Professional Services Agreement.
Bradley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. Good afternoon, uh mayor and commissioners. Um, here this afternoon in front of you, seeking uh approval to execute a professional services agreement with Amber Lee Aquatics to continue swim lessons at our Camp Weewaw Pool. Uh, Amber Lee Aquatics ran programming in twenty twenty four for a variety of swim lessons. Uh, some of the statistics are up on the screen now. Uh, we'd like to continue the growth of this program and this offering at the Camp Weewaw Pool uh throughout twenty twenty five uh with Amber Lee Aquatics. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Bradley?
No, just want to say thank you for putting in the agreement in the way that we discussed previously of having the provider sign it already and no edits or no, and nothing needed other than a signature at the end. Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve the Professional Services Agreement with Amber Lee's Aquatics. Some got a motion by Commissioner Anderson. Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up, multifamily affordable housing developers agreement. Bobby?
Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Developer of Southwick Commons is seeking approval of a developers agreement for a school impact fee exemption. This agreement is by and among Orange County, the City of Apopka, Southwick Commons LTD, and the School Board of Orange County, Florida, otherwise known as OCPS. Orange County Code provides a payment of all or a portion of school impact fees may be exempted for housing that meets or needs, meets or exceeds the definition of affordable pursuant to floor stature. Total amount of school impact, impact fees exempted under this agreement is one million two hundred ninety six thousand and one hundred ninety two dollars. Agreement was approved by OCPS on February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Is anticip- anticipated to be on the Orange County Board of County Commissioners agenda on April twenty second, twenty twenty five. Recommended motion is approval of this agreement. Uh, I believe the uh legal representation for Southwick Commons is here this afternoon as well, if there are any questions.
Any questions for Bobby?
Just confirmations about what we already discussed during agenda review. This is not impact fees to the City of Apopka. It's impact fees to Orange County Public Schools.
That's correct.
Orange County Public Schools has already approved this.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that's correct.
In an agreement with it.
Yep.
Once, should we approve it, it will then go to Orange County.
That is correct, yes. It's basically a four party agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Sitting in back allows me to get my steps in for the day. Rod Olson, thirty one fifty six Rolling Hills Lane. Uh, here we have Orange County Public Schools crying for money, and now they're, they've approved, this is more of the rubber stamp issue, approved the aspect, oh, we'll waive this. Our schools are underfunded. We need to do a better job.
Anybody else? First of all, I apologize. I didn't know a former commissioner Victoria Siplins in the house. She had all green on, so I thought she was a woman's club. So, sorry, I didn't recognize you earlier.
If it's this property is for multi levels of need?
Multi family.
Multi family, but it is of different levels of need. It's not all poor. Um, I think that there needs to be a sliding scale. That if it's twenty percent needy and the rest regular or high income, that it needs to be sliding scale, that only twenty percent gets waived or thirty percent gets waived. Because we can't make a deficit of the education system. And I worked in administrat- I had a degree in administration and could run a community college, a directorship. And I had, I worked in administration at an international university. This is ridiculous to waive all the funds going for all the children. And let's say the needy people have very few children and the affluent people in the building have lots of children. So they're getting away with, the building is getting away with fun- not funding any impact fees for the affluent kids. I think as part of this four way discussion, that it would be appropriate for us to say, whoa, we need to make this appropria- uh appropriated. Thank you.
Anybody else? Not will close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve the multifamily affordable housing developers agreement for school impact fee exemption for Southwick Commons.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We'd like to continue the growth of this program and this offering at the Camp Weewaw Pool. Throughout two thousand twenty-five with Amber Lee Aquatics, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Bradley?
No, just want to say thank you for putting in the agreement in the way that we discussed previously of having the. Provider signed already and no edits or no in nothing needed other than a signature at the end, thank you for that.
Absolutely. Anybody else? All right, anybody from the public should speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the professional services agreement with Amber Lee's Aquatics. Some got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up, RFQ two thousand twenty-three dash A dash eighteen.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Blanche Sherman Finance Director. The item before you is a request for approval of the negotiated contract for RFQ two thousand twenty-three A eighteen. It's the construction manager at risk, C Mar, for the new public safety facility. And the contract is with H J High Construction. We started this process several months ago, we had to go through the negotiations, we went through also hiring a design contractor, ADG. And now we're ready for the C Mar. So the amount is negotiated was three hundred and thirty-eight thousand with a ten percent contingency, that brings the total to three hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Any questions for Blanche on this? Anybody from the public should speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the C Mar contract for RFQ two thousand twenty-three dash A dash eighteen. For a new public safety facility to H J High Construction. Got motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up, multifamily affordable housing developers agreement, Bobby?
Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Developer of Southwick Commons is seeking approval of a developer's agreement for school impact fee exemption. This agreement is buying among Orange County, the City of Apopka, Southwick Commons LTD, and the School Board of Orange County, Florida, otherwise known as O C P S. Orange County Code provides a payment of all or a portion of school impact fees may be exempted for housing that meets or needs. Meets or exceeds the definition of affordable pursuant to floor stature. Total amount of school impact fees exempted under this agreement is one million, two hundred ninety-six thousand and one hundred ninety-two dollars. Agreement was approved by O C P S on February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five. Is anticipated to be on the Orange County Board of County Commissioners agenda on April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Recommended motion is approval of this agreement, I believe the legal representation for Southwick Commons is here this afternoon as well, if there are any questions.
Any questions for Bobby?
Just confirmations about what we've already discussed during agenda review. This is not impact fees to the State of Apopka, it's impact fees to Orange County Public Schools.
That's correct.
Orange County Public Schools has already approved this.
Mm-hmm, yes, that's correct.
In an agreement with it.
Yep.
Once should we approve it, it will then go to Orange County.
That is correct, yes, it's basically a four-party agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Bobby, anybody from the public should speak on this one?
Sitting in back allows me to get my steps in for the day, Rottleson thirty-one fifty-six, Rolling Hills Lane. Here we have Orange County Public Schools crying for money and now they're they've approved, this is more of the rubber stamp issue. Approved the aspect, oh, we'll waive this, our schools are underfunded, we need to do a better job.
Anybody else? First of all, I apologize, I didn't know a former Commissioner Victoria Siplins in the house, she had all green on, so I thought she was a women's club. So, sorry, I didn't recognize you earlier.
If it's. This property is for multi-levels of need.
Multi-family.
Multi-family, but it is of different levels of need, it's not all poor.
Yes.
I think that there needs to be a sliding scale. That if it's twenty percent needy and the rest regular or high income. That it needs to be sliding scale, that only twenty percent gets waived or thirty percent gets waived. Because we can't make a deficit of the education system. And I worked in administrat- I had a degree in administration and could run a. Community college, a directorship. And I had, I worked in administration at an international university. This is ridiculous to waive all the funds going for all the children. And let's say the needy people have very few children and the affluent people in the building have lots of children. So they're getting away with, the building is getting away with fun, not funding any impact fees for the. Affluent kids. I think as part of this four-way discussion, that it would be appropriate for us to say, whoa. We need to make this appropriate appropriated. Thank you.
Anybody else? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the multifamily affordable housing developers agreement. For school impact fee exemption for Southwick Commons.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. So, let's see, the adjacent alleyway, Halls on Fifth, Cliff.
All right. I think you have the staff report as well as the draft agreement. I was asked to prepare an agreement for the adjacent alleyway to the west of the property that is known as Halls on Fifth LLC. It is a property that as I understand is being developed or is currently developed for a multi-restaurant and bar, that's the description of the owner. And she's requesting exclusive use of the west side alleyway for outside seating, I presume dining, I'm not sure exactly what else. I'm sure there would be services and so forth. I do not know if this is an accurate example, but I feel like it's something like if you've been to the Plant City Market on. In Winter Garden where they have a number of different restaurants or places you can order food and then go outside and eat, I think this is something similar to that. And so what you have in your packet is a use agreement. It was brought to my attention that Commissioner Nesta caught a couple of typos where I said called it park property instead of alleyway property, but that's what is meant and that if this was adopted. That's what it would be, so that's the agreement in front of you. There is a according to the to the staff report, a recommended motion, but to be clear, because I'm the lawyer, I don't recommend motions, that's what the staff report says. So that's what the thing is, I'm happy to answer any questions about the agreement, some of the highlights, it provides for exclusive use. Of the alleyway, it also provides for. A an insurance policy of up to two million, I think of two million dollars to where we would be named insured. As an additional insured for liability purposes. It requires the owners not to do anything that alters in a negative way the property while they're using it. And gives us still the right to access it if needed for the city in a case of an emergency or anything like that, so. All that stuff is in there, like I said, I'm happy to answer questions, I don't know if the applicant's here because I've never met her, but I've talked. So the answer is yes, the applicant is here, so I can answer questions or sit down and then answer questions, however you want to do.
Questions for Cliff?
I just want to say I did visit the alleyway, the alleyway, the alleyway in question, I did visit it. I feel it's going with the halls be leasing it, is that the right term I'm saying, the use?
It's a use agreement, it's it's sort of like, and I don't know if you have this in in Apopka per se, but it does exist in other cities. Where, for example, we have right away in Maitland that we aren't using for road widening. And it is adjacent to other people's property and they like to garden, so they want to put flowers and other stuff there. They have to get a use agreement to use the city property to put in the garden, but if we ever needed it, they have to. We get to take it back and destroy the garden, whatever we gotta do. So this is modified from that, it's different in that it's not a garden and it's not a road wide away, it's an alleyway that actually exists. Between this business and I guess the business next door, maybe businesses next door. It is my understanding that those businesses that are immediately impacted are are not objecting. It was a criterion to get their approval before this becomes operative, but that's something I will let the applicant discuss with you all.
Any other questions for Cliff?
Let me just ask you, on- once we approve this agreement, should it be approved? Could the applicant come back later if we want to just vacate the alley?
Yeah, yeah, a vacation is always an issue too, but the thing with the vacation that needs to be understood is in a vacation, you take. I would consider this like a roadway, even though it's called an alley because it's not wide enough for two cars to pass. And the way vacation works is the property owner from the crown of the quote road on either side gets what you vacate. So if there's a different property owner on the west side than on the applicant's side, then it would be split half and half. So that's why vacation in this case would not necessarily solve the problem that the applicant's trying to solve. Thank you.
Any other questions for?
I had a couple of questions, the survey that was provided here. It shows it going all the way through the north alleyway there. Up to the the next building effectively, is that, so it's going all the way from that alley all the way north covering that that road and access to the to the north.
It is, that was my understanding of what the applicant was asking for, and so I and I. I had no legal description that said we only want from point A to point B, so I used, as you can see, a highlighter to cover what I believe was being asked for. You can ask the applicant if it's less than that or the right amount or whatever, that I don't know, but that's what I was told, so that's what I used.
Okay. The. And you'd already stated this, but I just want to reiterate it, should other property owners not approve this? In the area, it becomes a problem, correct? Is it like an all or nothing or?
It it doesn't become a problem because ultimately it's your alleyway, but it's something I was trying to avoid a headache for you, let me explain, obviously, I think you probably figured out what I mean by that. I wouldn't want you to have approved this only later to have businesses come in and said, hey, I needed that for, I don't know, emergency access or I. I needed it for deliveries or I needed it for whatever, and so the idea of getting their approval was for them to say. Yeah, we don't use it, we don't need it, it's not an access point for us, it's okay, but you could do it anyway. But my idea in in saying that it should be a part of this is simply to avoid you having to then answer later to people who. Said they didn't know, didn't approve or whatever, if they've sitting down said in writing that they're okay with it, that would eliminate that argument, so that was the reason for it, it's not legally required, that's why I thought it was a good idea.
Okay, the the parcel to the west of the single-family home on it. Are we concerned or is there any legal recourse that they need access to this alleyway?
Again, I I'm not aware of any and I was not told by any that they, when I talked to our planners, they said here are the people that are. Potentially affected, but when I gather in subsequent discussions, the ones who actually had a legitimate use for it or potentially legitimate use of the ones that are immediately adjacent. And from what I understand, they don't object, but again, I've not talked to any of them, so I don't know.
Okay, and then. This use agreement itself, do we have anything else like that in the seat of Apopka currently?
That I don't know, this is the first one I've done for you, I've done them for a lot of other places, but I don't know if there are any existing ones in Apopka.
Okay.
There there now that, let me say this, there's something similar and that is for. Trying to remember the name of the this propagate, I think it's called propagate. And it's basically, it's called a revocable license, for all intents and purposes, it works the same way. It gives the party who has the license the opportunity, in fact, I drafted one for this property as an alternative. And there is that because it's for the propagate, I think there's some sort of a.
It's the same company, it's the same person.
It's the same person, it's the same person.
But isn't there an agreement there for like a dock or something? At any rate, so yes, in that regard, it's similar, the difference in a license agreement and this is a license agreement is revocable at any time by the party who's issued it us for any reason. And the way the license agreement reads, similar to the one that was done for propagate, is that it is not exclusive. So whereas the use agreement is exclusive, meaning just the owner of the business. The license agreement is not exclusive, but essentially based on their use, it would be hard for anyone else to to gain use. But it would allow someone if they needed to walk through there for their business or whatever, I guess that's that was the purpose, I really can't say because I. Used as my guide what was done in the propagate, the dock thing.
Yeah, and I think that would make sense to be consistent with what we've created in the past with the same group. So that it it protects both parties in that capacity then, and it's consistent.
Yes, and and that that document exists, that's an alternative if you want to consider it or whatever, but I I did do a draft of that as well.
Okay, I that would, I would be very interested to see that one then. And then do we know how much, what's the total acreage or square footage that this alleyway is, do we have that?
That I do not know. There's a survey attached and it may say it on there, but the print's very small.
It's less than eight feet wide, a vehicle came past through it.
Maybe the applicant can help us.
Yeah.
If there's a, anything else for me?
Commissioner Smith, you're finished? Commissioner Nesta, you guys finished?
Yes, thank you.
So in regards to, I see there's a list of the adjacent owners to, and maybe you're not sure, are these the owners that own the property?
I don't know, I I asked planning through Mr. Howell to say who who would need to agree to this if we were covering adjacent owners and that's the list I got, but. Where they are relative to the word adjacent, they might be across the street, they might be down the block, I I, when I'm thinking adjacent, I'm thinking the people who are touching the alleyway.
Because as.
So I don't know which ones are with.
So as I look at the list, so you have, of course, you have the property owners, then you have tenants that are actually renting the, have exclusive use. So I don't see, just looking at just knowing kind of the landscape of these owners, but there are tenants also, so are we just getting the permission of the owners or the tenants as well that are occupying the units?
In the in the agreement that I put together for their approval, I said, if you're a tenant and you're not the owner, then please tell us who the owner is and we will get go to the owner. Who you really want is both, because even if the owner is the one who has the actual say over whether it's okay or not okay, that owner will have leases. Or something with tenants and the tenants would then start to complain and create a problem, so it may. Cause the owner to come down here or the tenant to come down here, and either way, we're not trying to cause problems for business, so that's why when I put together the. I think it was called the property owner's approval form or something, it's as an exhibit there, it's so that if you're just a tenant, you sign one side, if you're a tenant and the owner, let us know. If you're not the owner, but you're a tenant and you know who the owner is, tell us that on the other side, so we would have that and we could follow up, that's the way it was drafted.
Only reason I'm asking is because I were actually was contacted by tenants and they didn't know anything about this and they wasn't notified at all, so.
They may not have been notified yet, that I'm not sure.
Okay.
All right.
Any other question, well, Cliff, I got just one for you, so i- in your. Legal ex- you know, experience, should we just be the ones to the west of the alleyway and not this whole complex which?
I would think that those are the ones who would be the ones who might use the alleyway.
Okay.
I I don't know, and I wouldn't discount somebody saying, oh, well, I have a useful, because I don't know. But but it makes sense, what I'm thinking when I'm saying adjacent, I'm thinking people who would use it to access their property. Either for deliveries or parking or something else, and since I don't know. Who who that impacts, I I I don't know, but yes, my, what I was thinking is those that would be to the west.
Okay.
Is it the entire highlighted area or just a portion that's adjacent to?
The highlighted area is like.
That's the whole entire alleyway.
And it's basically the down the length of the Halls on Fifth building.
But no, this is highlighted past the the building, it looks like here.
Maybe, maybe.
It's just, it's just the length of the halls.
Okay, I I see where it is, okay, it's just the middle of the halls property.
Yeah, yeah. To the end of.
I see, okay.
All right, thank you. I got, I think we have some questions for the applicant, come on up.
I see.
Mr. Anderson, you want to go ahead and?
Oh, no, I see it.
You good?
I I see it.
Mr. Velasquez, any any questions?
No, I I went yesterday to physically see what the alleyway was and. My understanding is that. The owner of Halls Feet has six feet of that alleyway.
Eight point five.
How much?
Eight point five, eight point five of the fifteen.
If she were to put a fence on that.
Oh, L D calls on fifth.
It's if she were to put a fence at the end of her property, what's left of the alleyway is less than what, three feet, two feet? So it has no use for anyone, so by giving her the use agreement, we're just really allowing. Her to have the three or four feet. That no one can use.
Yeah, so just to be clear, for Commissioner Nesta's question, the gentleman that does have the residential property, he has an entrance in the front. As well as an entrance in the back, so he is not affected in any way.
Well, in, so having been out there, his access point is over sidewalk and over a curb, so I just didn't know if there was. Issues with the access.
He has a drivable, he has a driveway with a gate. And we would actually be replacing that that homeowner's gate or fence with a brand new one. At our cost, because it's. Not great looking. And then the only other people that really use that alleyway is Domino's and I believe Nelson, he sent an email in support. The alleyway has been closed for over a year, I should mention, so if anyone. Had a, you know, an issue, I I would have thought that in a year they would have voiced that concern, but it's it it was closed. With the permission of the building department, police and fire came out and approved the closure for the construction. So this has already been closed, and then I did send you all a picture. Showing you, you know, because if 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 it is your pleasure to not close the alleyway, I still do have to put up a fence on my property in order to protect. You know, the outside where we have electrical panels and such, and so this is less about aesthetics and more about public safety. If somebody feels like they can drive through there and you have people standing outside or sitting outside, we we might have. You know, a a an accident or a tragedy on our hand. So I'm not trying to go all the way back, I'm just basically trying to be within my property. And then use the, you know, the three or four feet to to the left.
How wide is that total alley?
It is a hundred and seventy-one feet.
Sorry, width?
Length.
Length.
Asking for width?
Oh, I'm so sorry, fifteen feet.
Okay.
And I own eight point five.
Okay. So. Your rationale or desire for that, is it for any other purpose than just to have tables out there to serve?
Well, it's it's not just tables, it's that I'm concerned that when I put my fence up on the side of the building and, you know, in those eight point five feet that I do own. That someone's going to think that they can drive through, the picture that I sent you had a Toyota Corolla on it. If somebody tries to drive through in a truck or even a mid-sized SUV, they might cause damage not just to my property, but to the homeowner next door. So like I said, it's less about aesthetics and seating, although that would be a great addition to have more elevated seating, but it's more about safety.
Okay, if if this isn't approved, does it negatively impact your business in any capacity?
It will negatively impact the business in the sense that I won't have as much. Outside ADA seating for people to get around. We had planned, so the, even though that is a, you know, the city alleyway. The city doesn't maintain it, even before we purchased it, Chris used to take care of it. So we had planned, it it also gets very dark out there, so we had planned to put some nice tables out there. You know, put some nice dim dimmable lights. And, you know, repave because right now it's the the pavement is probably, I don't know, thirty, forty years old. So we were gonna pay to have it repaved, make it nice, so we continue to promote that more walkable downtown that everybody wants.
Okay, and then do you need the seating at all for any type of additional permits, whether it's.
No.
Capacity issues, liquor license issues, anything like that, not issues, but.
No, yeah, I know what you're saying, no.
Okay, and then the, for what we do similar to the. Not farmer's market, Friday market. Are we able to do something similar to that instead of an exclusive use, something that you guys don't completely? Block it off?
I I think that we're asking for trouble if we do that because unless we, unless I put up gates, I think I'm gonna have somebody try and drive through and that's that's really scary, especially with how family friendly this is gonna be. If I have, you know, God forbid, children out there and somebody tries to drive through that alley, I'm I have serious concerns.
Just quick question for your attorney shepherd, so I I know that and I know outside seating is limited here in Apopka, it is, so there is a need for it. But my question to you is I know like Winter Park and different areas, they have like outside seating, right? So is there an agreement with the tenants and the owners with the outside seating?
Bet a lot of money that the answer is yes, although since I'm not in Winter Park, I wouldn't be able to tell you, if you see the same thing downtown, you'll see the same thing in New York. And the reason I'm willing to bet it is because of the liability, without such an agreement, for example, if there were injuries on the property that was being utilized exclusively by the restaurant or the business. You know, for whatever reason, then the city or whatever jurisdiction would have potential liability, that's why you get an agreement that includes insurance and being named as an additional assured to. To limit that liability, because while the agreement, both of them, by the way, I sent you all while I was sitting here, the license, so you can look at that as an alternative. Because it basically covers the same ground and and you can make an informed decision, but to answer your question. Indemnity, which is in both agreements, is only as good as the amount of money that people have to give the indemnity, so without the insurance policy, indemnity is meaningless, so that's why it's in there.
But I do know that it is something we do have limited outside seating and was it, is it Sanford? Sanford, they have a nice little. They have a nice little
Yeah, and it's tiny. It's, it's a massive food hall. Uh, we will have just as many vendors, but yeah, we would be limited to just about the same, uh, seating, which is what, you know, would be unfortunate. But any other?
Any other questions?
Yeah, so, and, and thank you, uh, Attorney Shepherd for sending there a license agreement. I would definitely be more open to this type of agreement, so that's consistent with what you're already working with. Uh, it, it, I think it makes absolute sense. And then also, I mean, we can work that, that alleyway around to where we put blockades there effectively to make it still walkable to other businesses in the area. If we don't make it exclusive or if it just goes to the property line of halls.
I would be concerned again with not being able to fully fence it in because we had to pay Duke Energy to take the building from only having one phase electrical to three phase electrical. It is very serious power out there and keeping it open to mischief at night.
Fence your side in, a- as, and then you, similar to what we do on Friday nights, do the, that exact same thing. So as the, kind of your hot times, whatever that is, uh, whatever that looks like, then you have those agreements in place to, yep, I can shut it down on, pick your dates, pick your time. So, so that it can still be walkable in that area, once this starts getting activated more and more downtown. So other businesses and, and, and it creates that walkability as well. No driving, but we can block off the, the west side of that alleyway, the other seven feet. And make it walk, well, you still fencing your side, but then you have it open to where on the days and times that you know you're gonna be needing it and wanting those spaces, then you can open it up and, and it's reserved similar to, well, exactly what you do on, on, um, the Friday night market.
Got it.
Any other questions? No, well, public, anybody from public was just speaking.
For the, for the record, I want to correct something I said earlier, that was downtown sucks. Certain part of downtown sucks. Not all of downtown sucks, certain parts sucks. And certain part that we can definitely do better on. Now here, I'm, I'm kind of confused with the you got fifteen feet and you go back a, a hundred and seventy-one feet? That's a, that's a large area. And I, my concern is, you said that the police came and they closed the area off and nobody used the area. But now you're saying there's gonna be a concern if you put your fence there that people, that people are gonna be coming through and, and it's gonna create some safety hazards. So I don't understand the double, double talk there. So i- i- if you can help clear that up for me, I greatly appreciate it. But here's what we got. We got fifteen feet and a hundred and seventy-one feet that she want the exclusive right to. Regardless of how you paint it, how you look at it, and you ask yourself, is it fair for the other businesses down in that area? Anybody may want to come walk through the alleyway for whatever reason, but you can't do it because it exclusively belongs to her. That's not fair, and that's not setting a, a standard for everybody else downtown. All right, if you got eight feet, eight point five feet, and you put a fence around that, and you say, nobody's coming through, the area's already abandoned, you shouldn't have to worry about safety because ain't nobody coming through there anyway. Now that you got your fence up, that's added double, double safety. So that shouldn't be a concern. I want every business downtown to thrive. But when you look at that fifteen feet times a hundred and seventy-one, that's a lot of area to give the exclusive right to, to one business. And they have the right, they say, get off my property. It's not fair. Right, but the fifteen feet that goes all the way back, that's the alleyway. The, the alleyway only go back four feet. The alley, alleyway that you're saying only go back four feet.
Hang, hang on, hang on. We'll, she'll come back and answer when we get done, or we get through. She needs to answer the questions after.
Wait, wait, that's, that's fine, we'll, we'll let her, we'll let her answer the question, because at that time I can't really do a rebuttal. But if it's, if it's only that short, that, that space, and then that's, that's a lot less safety hazard that I'm concerned about. If it's only four feet, I'm not worried about a bunch of safety hazard. I was worried about it was a hundred and seventy-one feet going all the way back. You got a safety hazard that she could be, she should be concerned about. But if it's only four feet, she can put her eight and a half foot fence there and you ain't gotta worry about no safety. Not at all. Leroy Bell, my hell. I too have been wanting to see, uh, uh, downtown for a long time. And an old timer like me been here since nineteen sixty-eight. That alleyway been back there from the front all the way back. I can remember back all the way to Blackwell. That's why I used to do all my clothes shopping. Right next door, I think one, one time Freeze moved a liquor store in there. Now you got two different businesses, well, you got a barber shop in there now. That reaches, that property reached from the front to the back. But the point that I'm making, I think Propagate on the other side, the city put the stand on the outside, is that exclusive right for Propagate? It's not? So it's, it's, it's okay, it's cool. Well, then, you know, okay, since you wanted, since you wanted to get so well, now, now she spoke to me, but since you want to do this, let me tell you this. I also worked at Partners Food Market, I was a butcher back in the day. Terry Partners, that was his home, that was his home house right there. It's better ways to do this than to make things exclusive for just one business versus all business. It should be a fundamental fair playing field for everyone. If there's a liability risk there, and you're gonna, you're gonna, uh, 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 put a, a license there for alcohol, this, that, this, that, another, the city need to be proactive. You got the right to either put one way, no entry, you can put it there that is not a driveway. That cars not go through there. Right behind this building up there is another building there. I know the guy, uh, uh, he live in Lake Jewel to own the building. He used to have a wig placed there, you know it, keep it real. What happened when you put an exclusive right in there? And number one, all a person got to do, if they want something exclusive for the city, all you gotta do is get the police to come there and say, no, this ain't usable. Or you get the fire department to come in and, and just shut it down. Is that fair to everybody? That don't make no sense. It don't make no sense. And, and you know, if you, if you're gonna be dislenient with one applicant, you need to be like this with every applicant. Every applicant. It don't make no sense. We'll never get nowhere.
Anybody else?
Um, Virginia Street, twenty-one nineteen, um, Vista. Um, what I wanted to say, um, is that I think that a little bit of confusion is on the boundary survey. It, the yellow, the yellow marking goes all the way back to that next building. And then on the aerial survey, it doesn't. So, so Cl- Cliff, so which one is it? Is it the, should I be looking at the aerial view or should I be looking at the boundary?
The aerial was attached to the survey by the surveyor, so I just included the entire exhibit and tried to duplicate with the highlighter where the alley was on, alleyway was on both documents. But it was, that was, that aerial was included with the surveyor's survey.
Okay, so the aerial survey with the highlight is, it doesn't go all the way back to the next building, right?
Maybe that, a fault of my highlighter.
Okay, okay.
Trying to think, see what it was, but if I, you know, I'm, I'm not a reliable source in terms of being able to visually see it. But I know the idea was to run the length of, of her property. And to be, have the access off of what I guess is Fifth Street. And to be able to block that off so that her patrons or businesses' patrons could, could go and eat and do whatever they do out there and not have to worry about cars coming down and getting, you know, whack on.
Okay, so I will say that, uh, I, I too have gone out there and looked at the property. Um, and have actually walked. Um, have, before it was closed off, been through that alley coming, coming from church. Um, and since it's been closed off, I, I make that right instead of that left. Uh, I make that right to, to get on four forty-one instead of making that left to get on Fifth Street. But, um, the area is very narrow, uh, for my SUV to go down. And, um, other than a bicycle or, um, something like that, somebody just walking through there, I don't think that it would be, I think it needs to continue to stay closed, and I think it would be a great place to have outdoor eating because actually the way that, uh, and I've spent some time with Ella, the way the restaurant, where, the way the s- the, um, halls on the fifth is going to be done, you'll be able to go into different establishments and get different foods, and there's not gonna be a lot of room for eating or sitting. And I think having something outdoors would be nice, or what's gonna happen, what will happen is people get their food and walk across the street and eat it at the pro- you know, at the Propagate place. Um, um, that's outside. So I don't see a reason why we couldn't just go ahead and just close that area off so that we can, could have the, have the food, you know, eat right there. Um, I mean, that's, that, that's just my opinion. And, uh, seeing, um, how the progression has been happening inside of Halls on Fifth as I kind of peek through the door, there's not a lot of room inside to sit down. It's not a lot of room. I think it'd be a great addition, and, uh, as we continue to grow and we continue to beautify that area, I think it would be something that would, that would be, um, done. They're putting a lot of in, they're putting a lot of investment and a lot of money into that. So I think we should support them.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, close the public hearing, look for a motion. Well, excuse me, I, uh, Ella, you come back up, you had a couple, a couple of questions, if you could. Wanted you to answer from the mic, just so we had, as a public record.
Yes, hi. Ella do calls on fifth. What questions can I answer?
There, there were a couple of questions.
So it's
Can I just, um, because I did get some emails in support of what you were asking for. How many businesses will Hall's Feet?
So Halls on Fifth is gonna bring six new restaurants to our downtown area. All of those six restaurants, this is their second location, except for our anchor vendor, this is their sixth location, and they are an award-winning, um, team of chefs. Um, so it's, yeah, it's going to be.
From what I'm hearing, everyone seems to think that it's just you.
No, it's, it's, it's seven new businesses.
How many businesses were there?
Seven, yeah, seven.
And then you have the kitchen way back that's going to be, was smaller.
Yeah, so, um, for example, people that sell food at the farmer's market, if they do not have a brick and mortar, um, they do have to work out of a commissary kitchen in order to legally sell food. So places like that seek out, um, commissary kitchens so that they can obtain their license through the DBPR and be a legal and safe food vendor. Um, so currently, the closest commissary kitchen, um, is, I believe in Longwood. And in the opposite direction, it's, um, Eustace. Um, so we would then have one here, um, in Apopka.
Who are the six or seven businesses that'll be in there?
Yeah, so, um, um, Butcher's Nook, currently in Mount Dora. So he is an A-five wagyu butcher, so you'll be able to come in and buy prime cuts from him, um, tomahawks, things like that. But he also makes really great, um, sandwiches. Um, he is, he retired as the executive chef for the Miami Dolphins, moved up here, opened up the Butcher's Nook, and so this will be his second location. Um, Empanada and Co. is currently operating their first location out of Plant Street Market. That's the food hall in Winter Garden. Um, Solicious Vegan is a, uh, vegan soul food restaurant. They are currently operating, um, their, um, first location in downtown Orlando. Uh, Parlor Kitchen, he just won, um, Best Dessert in America. Um, for his, uh, cookie stuffed waffle, he will be our dessert vendor. Sweet and Salty is currently operating out of the Sanford Food Hall. Uh, they will be bringing barbecue back to Apopka. And then our anchor vendor is, uh, Thriving Hospitality Group. So they have Thrive Kitchen in downtown Orlando. Uh, you may have, uh, heard about Lamp and Shade that just opened up in the Mills Fifty District. Uh, Packwoods in Maitland, Bounce in UCF, uh, Society in Lake Mary, and, um, The Rose in Tampa. And they will be, uh, bringing us a Michelin star chef. So needless to say, we expect to be busy. Um, because typically, if you've been to other food halls, you don't have nearly the, um, type of vendor that we are bringing to Apopka. They're not as well-known, they kind of just like shove people in there. Whereas we really, um, took our time to curate an exceptional list of vendors. Um, that would get people downtown.
I just have one more question for Attorney Shepherd. So I, I, I also received a lot of emails in support of this, and I do understand the need for outside seating. I think the issue is, and, and maybe you can kind of help us kind of bring it together, the issue is, is that a private owner has exclusive use to city property. I think that, so is there a way, how, how do we, you know, legally protect the city and also still give the citizens their right to their property?
Okay, so, uh, it is not uncommon for cities to provide exclusive uses of, of city property. As I've mentioned, and we've already talked about restaurants and so forth, where this happens with outdoor seating. The difference here, if there is one, is the difference in the fact that this is an alleyway as opposed to like part of a large sidewalk, for example, which you typically see out front of a building or something like that. And i- in theory, and again, that's where I have to, uh, you know, profess that this is something that has to be determined by the, the planning folks. But i- in theory, this as an alley, even though it's a narrow alley, would have the opportunity for cars, deliveries, and, and things of that nature, that again, when I was drafting the agreement, I wasn't sure whether those were active or not active. I obviously subsequently learned that at least for a year, it's been closed down with no one saying, hey, hurry up and open it back up. So, you know, maybe that's relevant to the conversation. But in terms of, if you mean protecting you, uh, it is a very common thing, as we've discussed, to allow city property to be used to enhance businesses, as long as the city can get what the city needs out of it. And by that, I mean, for example, um, and these, these are wild examples, but it's the only I can come up with. Let's suppose that that general area was hit by some sort of devastating event, whether it be a fire or a tornado, whatever. And that alleyway turns out to be the perfect place for Red Cross volunteers to set up with tables, to disperse water and supplies and so forth. Under either agreement, we can take that thing back and use it and say, sorry, get out of here, this is important, it's an emergency. And so in that regard, the city's needs are met. In addition, I think in the license agreement, it says we can come in and, and do inspections and, and reviews and make sure everything is copacetic, and if we find anything out of whack, or if we just want it back, we can take it back. So that's in the license agreement, I'm pretty sure. I think it's pretty much in both agreements. And so that's the city's interest, but, but again, the citizen's interest is okay. And so that's the city's interest, but but again, the citizen's interest is, okay, who uses the alley? And that's what I was trying to get at when I said property owner approvals of who might have a legitimate claim that this is where I would use a delivery truck. Or this might be access, a secondary access point, which I, again, was unaware of. But I am led to believe that the ones who legit legitimately would use it as businesses would be those to the west of the Halls on Fifth property. And what I understand, although obviously I've never spoken to them, is that those parties are not in disagreement with this. But again, that's what I understand, don't know the actual facts of the matter. And that's why I said, I put it, I I put it on the the property owner, the applicant, to go get those approvals. So what whichever ones those would be and and do it. I asked for a list of adjacent, probably my fault in using the word adjacent, property owners, because to me, adjacent means the ones that are touching the alley or have an actual use of them. Not necessarily people who are across the street or down the block. Um, but I think the list that you saw, which I provided, I make sure y'all saw everything I saw, is more than just the people who I would consider adjacent. Good, Ms. Anderson?
I mean. And and to be clear, my she, my property is is long, you know, so the it's um I'm not trying to encroach on anyone else like the. If you've seen the Halls Feed building, it's a really long building, it is not as wide. So I just want to make it clear that we are not trying to take up any additional space. It is literally the picture that I sent this morning. Um, and for anybody that cares, that's it. My fence would go there, that's it's it's the length of a corolla, so. Any any other?
No, so I I just think, and this for the everyone uh on the dais here, is that I think. Let's stay consistent with what uh property has already done, um the license agreement that Attorney Shepherd just sent over, I think. Aligns the same goals. And again, it stays consistent toward not, okay, which agreement, which provisions, which that, it stays consistent with what we need. And again, it's the a license agreement, a revocable license agreement already in place that uh that we're dealing with on.
Right, yeah. A a fence in the middle of the property, like if you said, like, put put the fence on the eight point five, you know, if that's the only option, fine, I'll I'll do it. It it is going to look ugly. Um, but if we handle it like, we do propagate, I mean, people from Three Odd Guys go buy food and beer. Um, at prop uh at at Three Odd Guys, they come over, they eat all of, you know, people that are at the farmer's market, they all come. So when you're talking about will this be accessible to other businesses, like we've always been uh more than happy to share uh the deck. Um, and we've we've done this because it it helps build the downtown. And I don't, I'm not asking for special favor, but nobody else is doing it. So if someone else would like to um take the building off my hands, um, you know.
Okay, all right, so we'll close this public hearing, and it looks like Commissioner Nesta would like to look at the license agreement instead of the the use agreement. So can we make a motion, Cliff?
Sure.
Well, I just like, no, what what's the difference between the two?
The the difference between the a license and the use agreement is is really minimal. But this license agreement mirrors that for propagate. It's minimal in that in either case, the agreement can be canceled by the city. It's minimal in the case that either neither of them require the payment of 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 money from the applicant. It's simply there, we're giving them a right to use it. The one significant difference, and there there was a couple, was that the license agreement clearly says it's non-exclusive versus exclusive on the use agreement. And so that's one of the things, and that's exactly the way it reads on the propagate uh document. And secondarily, it is a lot more clear about we just, if we say we're done with you, we're we're done with you. And so in that regard, they're two, they're different. Um, the other thing that um Diane, uh Diane wanted me to mention to you is, and again, I'm trying to listen and talk and do all answer questions. But if in fact, because the applicant already has eight feet, she really only needs another four, that would still leave, according to the measurements, another eleven feet, which would be unencumbered by this. And so if that's true, and if that's satisfactory to the applicant, then you could just change the exhibit to where the line is essentially. Four feet from where her property line is now over and then down the length of the property. So there would still be some property on the other side that is not encumbered by this agreement. But that's that's a call for you all to make, I just want to make sure, because Diane asked me to, that I brought that up to you as an option, if in fact, that is something the applicant is saying she's okay with. Okay, thank you, Cliff. Um, so I guess we're, I, Commissioner Nesta, if you want to make a a motion to approve a license agreement that Cliff has provided for us as as stated. Um, happy to entertain that motion. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, resolution twenty twenty five dash ten.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Amir Hamza, my I'm a planner one. The applicant has submitted an application to vacate a portion of a utility easement surrounding a lift station tract. This is the aerial map of the utility easement that is being vacated. Here is the utility easement being vacated, and uh it is a zero point zero zero seven acres. The Development Review Committee does not object to the vacation of the utility easements surrounding a lift station tract. The recommended motion is to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash ten.
Okay, any questions for Amir? Anybody from public who should speak on this one? Not close the public hearing, look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash ten.
So.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Nesta, why don't you get us started, City Council reports?
Okay, give me a couple of seconds here. Okay, uh, just want to remind everyone of office hours. I need to make a slight adjustment uh to tomorrow's office hours. It'll be from two thirty to four thirty versus the normal eleven to one. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of of my office hours and and that, again, tomorrow's the one-time adjustment, not permanently being moved to that. But it'll be moved to two thirty to four thirty, still here at the State of Apopka. Um, and I always like to, I want to make sure I reference, I have had residents discuss with me, um, their concerns about accessing the building. Um, with resolution thirty eighty one and and feeling sometime intimidated and attacked. So I want to make sure that, should you feel that way, and it's well warranted, uh that I can accommodate and will accommodate meeting anywhere else should you feel the need to for that. Next up is that I received a text message last council meeting, uh during the meeting, from uh Lou Hobner. Uh, from number four zero seven three four one forty three ninety four during the March nineteenth, twenty twenty five, seven P M city council meeting. Specifically got the message at eight forty nine. It's stating, why don't you just shut up with three question marks? I want to make sure that it's on the public record and add it to the public record as well, so I'll provide copies and then it can be distributed so that it's not a sunshine or anything. And as it's being passed down, it it, I've been on the receiving end of many attacks and hateful messages mailed to my house where my family lives. And consistently, I I've always been zero tolerance for any attacks, hate mail, anything of that nature, not only for myself, but everyone that's elected up here, it's it's not okay. And it's evident here at the State of Apopka, the administration creates a hostile work environment. That's been very evident, and it's clear that it's been passed down to um to some supporters as well. And this hasn't stopped there, I mean, I have reports of being attacked, physically assaulted while just doing my job. Out out with the residents and doing what I can to promote the betterment of Apopka. Um, it's been on social media, you've had residents reach out for this as well, and it's one of those scenarios that it it's got to stop at some point, and when will it? Our residents deserve so much better and and we all need to make sure we're leading in that capacity. So that's all I have.
Commissioner Smith?
Uh, I would just like to say uh to to Mrs. Street, I didn't mean in disrespect when I said I didn't have any comment, but I just try to be consistent that I don't comment during public comment. Um, but but I have to uh been paying attention uh to the growth in in Apopka and uh been in contact with our school board member in reference to school over overcrowding. And unfortunately, the the state law says that there has to be a certain number of students overcrowding before they were building a school. And and I just firmly believe, uh just as we were able to get the K through eight school moved up and built early. At this point, uh I feel that there's already been a high school uh site uh purchased by the school board. And and I believe that our school board member that represents us, when she continues to see the growth, and that point comes that that school can also be moved up as well. Um, so so that's that's my take. Uh, I do realize that um our infrastructure uh needs some work. Um, but when I talk to our our planners, when they talk to developers, they're donating right away in order to make that happen. Uh, and so as our city continues to grow, the infrastructure will continue to improve. And by the developers donate the land, then that means that we as a city don't have to go back and do eminent domain and take the land, which is along the process. And so I just wanted to let you know I wasn't being disrespectful, but I just wanted to be consistent in in what I do. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Velasquez?
Um, well, the only thing I I really have, I mean, other than we we've all went to the um groundbreaking for public sun keen. And we've attended a few other um events here, the murals at Philly sweetly. Um, I did want to address the city charter. I have uh Mr. Jack Douglas, who um did reach out to me earlier today and was questioning. Uh, why didn't we have anything on the city charter? I did send an email to our city attorney regarding public comment. That was sent to me, and also it's I've been approached by that, they're asking, can we put public comment into the city charter?
The answer to the question is, yes, you can, if that's what you choose to do. Uh, and I think I noted to you in my response back, if however, the council manager form of government were to be approved, if it goes to the voters and is approved. Then it would be up to the council as a whole to decide how the agendas run. So in one sense, if that went for the voters and they approved it, then it would up be up to the council commission to decide how the agendas would work. On the other side of it, if that didn't happen, or if it doesn't go to the voters, then yes, that could be on as a different amendment. It could be on either way, I'm just, that's the issue.
Okay, um, I just want to ask the chair, what can I respond to?
Putting on there, I mean, is it is it?
One about for the charter, for the charter amendments.
Wha- what's the question, because I've done them.
Oh, no, I know that, but there was a discussion at the last council meeting. And I had to go back to listen to the workshop. At the time, it was Commissioner Nester who had the, who gave the two dates, April second and April sixteen. And then the chair has said, we will discuss it and decide that at the council meeting, which was the very next meeting. Then I listened to the entire meeting and I realized the city charter was not brought back in the discussion. And so.
I I was, I didn't realize that either, and that's why I rushed to make sure I got stuff done by last Friday. And got the and and sent it in, even did a staff report, because I wasn't really sure, and I wanted to be sure, I even, I think I reached out to Susan to be sure today. Like, am I missing anything, am I supposed to be at a workshop? Because I wasn't sure. Um, but but basically, the schedule is yours now, everything that you would ask me to do, I've done, unless you add this this new thing about comment to it.
I I would like to add the public comment because um.
That's gonna require all of you.
My attention, um, and and then I was reminded that. Even though I answered an email regarding public comment, that I did not include it.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to add, like, just like last time, if the I get a majority of head bumps, go ahead and show us what that looks like, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
So if Attorney Shepherd, you had sent a whole package over for this, for the agenda?
I sent, I I I assumed, as is typically the case, that Friday was the deadline, and so I didn't really ask anybody, I just remembered, at least I thought I remembered, it turns out, I might have misremembered. Um, that this was supposed to be on today. And so I got the amendments, the drafted new ones. I added, for example, if you go look at them, you'll see there's uh the the, I told you there would be a time window to transition if you went to a council manager form of government, I added that in. Um, I can't remember all the things that we discussed, and I I think we're up to seven questions now, because there was a new question, but I can't remember what it is right now. Oh, um, what was it about? It 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 might have been about um the the city attorney, I can't remember, but there was, it it went from six questions, which it was, to seven questions now. And I'll be happy, I can, I can email it to you, but it's been sent to the city, because I assumed it was going to be on this agenda, but I just, I might have got that wrong.
No, it it was supposed to be on this agenda, if you can send us all that, that would be very helpful to understand that you had everything ready, and mayor, you just chose not to put it on this agenda?
We never agreed to that, and I didn't get it, so.
No, it it was not discussed at the council meeting following the workshop.
Uh, there was an additional thing I should mention, because I know Susan is thinking it right now, and that is when she got the materials, or maybe before she got the materials. She said, hey, we re, we had advertised this back in, was it November or something? And do, should we re-advertise it? And yes, apparently, we had advertised the first for first reading, that never, at least I don't think it ever happened. And so uh I told her, yeah, go ahead and re-advertise it, because you can never advertise too much, and there's been a long gap of time. I understand from today that based on when she had to re-advertise it, it might not have been advertised there around a month or day or something, so.
Yeah, you have to have seven days prior to the first hearing, so it it did not.
Okay. All right, then the other question, and I appreciate um uh your response, attorney, and um I guess we're going to advertise it then for the next council meeting? Okay, so the next question is, are we posting for a new chief administrator? And the reason why I'm asking for that is because um I feel with the commissioners, this the chief administrator was sort of our go-between, between. The staff and of course with your office. So right now, we don't have that go-in-between person. Um, all I do now, since uh his absence is I send, any requests, I send them to the city clerk. And I have been including our city attorney, and that's basically it. Um, and I appreciate that at the agenda reviews, that most of the staff does show up and they do provide the information. But that's only temporary, because I do remember um during uh our former Ed Bass, that we were doing that. But I I had expressed that I felt like I was taking a lot of time away from the directors and just the staff, that they had a meet all the time. Because I was sending all the emails directly to them, copying the city clerk. And for me, the C A O, which is the chief administrator, was sort of the go-to person that I would send everything to. And then he was responsible to kind of follow up with the information. And I have to say that he always almost did it all the time. So I'm hoping that we put out something for a new C A O.
It is.
That's it, for me.
Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, so the only thing that I have is in regards to the decorum statement that you read, um, mayor.
Sure.
The last time that was revised was two thousand and sixteen? Was it resolution two thousand, was it?
Twenty sixteen, two hundred and sixteen.
Okay.
Okay.
Just the resolution.
So I think it's a good, just based off of just trying to kind of echo uh what Commissioner Nestor, um, his experience, um, and I would actually take, why don't you shut up opposed to the things that I've received? Because everyone knows, not, you know, I've probably been attacked probably more than um anyone up there, you know, besides from the mayor. And um, I think it's important that um, that when, as a commission, all of us, when our supporters and people that support us, when we hear them being disrespectful to our colleagues. That we don't support it and that we stand, not just when it's. that we don't support it and that we stand, not just when it's only us being attacked, but when we have supporters that come to every single meeting, say derogatory things, yell and scream, and afterwards, they come up to the one of the councils, and we don't, we we support it. So I think it's important that moving forward, that collectively, all of us make sure that when we hear some something or one of our supporters being disrespectful to our colleagues, that we don't support it, not just when it happened, you know, to us. Um, of course, this is rude when someone says, why don't you shut up? But I'll take, why don't you shut up over the things they said about my daughter, my family, the attacks, even, you know, from here, the abuse that I take on the on the diet. So I think it's important that collectively that we stand up and make sure that that we are not putting not encouraging that type of behavior. Of course, we cannot control people and how they act, you know, that they have to police themselves. But I think it's important that that collectively, that we kind of stand together and let the residents know, let the people know, and whoever know that we do not support anyone being disrespectful. And I think it's important that we look at this resolution of decorum, and that not only do we update it, but also that I'm asking that our mayor, mayor, that our chair, to actually enforce it. When we have residents that are not following the decorum, that we actually follow the stuff necessary to make sure that we are operating it not only in high integrity, but also running the city professionally. So I think it's very important that we do look at updating that resolution, and I'm asking you, Mayor, to enforce the resolution as well. Thank you. That's all.
Yeah, and and if I can just comment on that briefly, to- totally agree with you. And prior to you sitting on a dais, I brought almost verbatim a very similar request that this, it should be united front of that, there it's zero tolerance for that. So I completely agree with that. It starts with us, though, as well, and and we need to make sure that, to your point, that we're leading by example. And this is the perfect point for decorum, that the mayor's laughing at me as I say that. So again, in the decorum statement says, please observe general rules of decorum and civility, and then laughing when I say that I've requested this years ago.
No, I'm just, I'm just smiling because I don't think it's her supporters of mine that are that are the ones that are creating issues here at city council.
It's not my supporters that are attacking me physically either. So. So yes, I echo that we do need this as a front, a united front, that it stops and not behind-the-scenes attacks or anything like that. Completely think that we stick stick with the decorum statement, but it starts up here first.
Anything else, Commissioner Anderson? Cliff, anything?
I'm going to give you some brief updates on things that are of interest to you or or need to be. The first is, as you know, because of my position with the F R A as their general counsel, I'm completely up to speed on what's going on with the legislative legislature's attempt to rein in what they believe to be rogue C R A activity. It is significantly overblown, but this is how legislation gets made frequently. Somebody hears something bad about one place and automatically applies to everybody else. It's a unique situation, to say the least, because it's very much like where if you were in grammar school and the teacher said, if 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 one of you was talking and I can't tell who it is, everybody gets punished. It's kind of that way. The short version of it is, it is still a serious issue, and what they want to do is, A, shut down C R As for everyone in no later than twenty forty-five September, I think it's what they have it currently set for. That's not so big for Apopka. Apopka C R A will be done by then. But also, no new projects unless they're in this year's budget and funded by September or October of twenty twenty-five. And that is still on the table. It can't, through a committee meeting last night, it came out of committee with an eight to five vote. Many people so passionately in favor of C R As, but it is a priority that's being pushed by the House Speaker. We are told but don't know that maybe the Senate has less of appetite for it. But I had mentioned last time, there may be some horse trading yet to happen. Because as long as the House is high to high on their priority list, it'll be something they want bad enough maybe to bargain for for, to get something the Senate wants back. So we'll see. The report I got last night was not encouraging. What I did do today is with the lobbyist for F R A, I provided some options to consider because I have no issue personally, this is me speaking, not as the general counsel, but just understanding how C R A law works, in punishing those who continue to flout the laws that apply to C R As. And there are some that do that. For example, spending money on marketing events when it's very clear you're not supposed to do that. And things of that nature. They use them sort of more like a piggy bank than they do the way C R As are to be used, which is to promote in a bricks and mortar kind of way, redevelop. So that's still ongoing, and I'll keep you posted. If you have an interest in seeing that C R As don't get ceremoniously undone, you might want to pick up the phone and call the legislative delegation that serves you and say, hey, this is important to us. The second thing, which I got asked about actually last night at the Eatonville's meeting, but I, it's worthwhile to bring up, is that one of the things that you may have read about is that the governor has it in his mind that property taxes need to be done away with. This is bad for local government. And I told the mayor, I promised I would try to be nonpartisan. All local government is funded by property taxes. If you take away property taxes, there are very few options to replace that money. The one that's at the top of everybody's list is sales tax, and sales tax hurts the people who can least afford it. Because those who live hand to mouth or paycheck to paycheck, which is a substantial portion of the population, will get higher sales taxes, seven, six and a half, seven percent, it might be twelve, fifteen percent, and every, on everything they buy. And they will be impacted by the most in terms of their tax burden will increase, and they'll have the least ability to cope with it. And so that is an issue. The governor most recently said, I don't know if it's going to come to fruition, that he wanted to start his campaign to get rid of pack property taxes by giving back everybody a thousand dollars, I think was the report. I will let you determine whether that is a political device or something that's real. But I do know that if you get rid of property taxes, it would be, and I'm not using too strong a word here, disastrous for local government. So to the extent you're on the phone talking about C R As, you might want to talk about that too.
Thank you, Cliff. All right, and I'll, the other thing is that on the House side, they're looking to reduce the sales tax, which obviously affects, you know, us. And I want to say, Blanche, they're about equal, just roundabout numbers, sales tax and property tax? Okay, thirty, that's not, I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes. Okay, so anyway, that's interesting, what's going on in in Tallahassee. So which brings me to the point, on the sixteenth, you know, at six o'clock, we're going to go to the C R A budget, because we're not sure where it's going to be. We want to have, I know Rad, we have, we've had a couple of meetings already, Radley and Blanch and and Bobby have had a couple of meetings to talk about how to to make sure we've got all of our money spent by October, allocated by October, so that we don't, we don't have to give it back in case it gets, they get eliminated. Yeah, so anyway, so six o'clock next, the next meeting, which is the sixteenth. So we'll, we're going, we're going to bring you a bunch of options on what we'd like to, you know, and the problem is, we also make, got to make sure we, as as Blanche said, we got to encumber them. So we've got a a a pie in the sky won't work if we can't get, you know, the, if we have to plan it and get it engineered. And then then that won't get us to the point where October first. So we got to, got to be very selective in the things that we can do that we can get done before that that date. And it might not happen, but we we need to be prepared for it to happen. Next up, if you get a chance, get over to the community center, it's really looking good. You know, we took off all that old wallpaper, new new wallpaper, got, I mean, excuse me, got repainted, we're putting in new shades. I mean, it it's really starting to look good. So we're really, Radley and his team have really worked hard to get this thing to look look very, very modern and updated, and and hopefully we'll turn it around and get, you know, a lot more events there. We had the ribbon cutting, we we held, you know, March twenty-first for the Apopka Action Sports Park. We had the groundbreaking, as Commissioner Velazquez said, for the Publix Keen, Keen Road in Apopka Coe. A little bit, my trip, I had a trip to Tallahassee. We, a couple of things, one is I'm I'm on the cap fund, which is the Hurricane Catastrophe Fund Board. And so we were talking about that for a couple of hours. I also was making my rounds with the House and Senate to, we've got two projects, I think, still in play. One is more asbestos pipe removal. And then the second is, we're trying to get money for the upgrade, the Gillum Center for the training. But it's a long, long way from over, and depending on whether you talk to the House, which is trying to cut the budget by several billion dollars and the Senate, which is, I think, kind of holding its own. This weekend, April fifth, Saturday, Kitlein Nelson Park, we've got the Apopka Health and Fitness Fest. It's a really neat opportunity, not only the fitness side, which is, which is great. You know, we've got, you know, yoga instructors and, you know, any, all the gyms will be there. But also, we have a bunch of vegan and and other food vendors there. So it's a really neat opportunity to come down and and visit at Kitlein Nelson Park, and that'll be from ten to four. We've got the Chamber Business Expo next Wednesday, April ninth, at the Apopka Community Center from ten A M to two P M. So come down, and we got all, trying to get all the businesses that that want to do more business here in the Apopka area, come on down.
Where is it going to be at? The Chamber?
Uh, at the community center.
Oh, it's at the, do I have to pay?
No. And then Bob, don't you have my picture? And I'll leave, I would like to leave you with this, so. Yes, so anyway, Bob Elmquist, you know, lives out in Piedmont Lakes, as we're doing Radley and his team and Street's team. We've been, you know, taking out all the old oak trees that have that have that need to be removed. He called me one day and said, hey, hey, Mayor, he said, you can't take this tree. I know it's 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 needs to go down because it's it's in bad shape, but guess what? I've got two baby owls that have, that were born in that in that that cavity of that tree. So anyway, they are there, and that tree will stay until they've 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 grown up and left left the nest. So I thought that was cool to have a picture of an outlet here in the Yeah, Piedmont Lake, so anyway, there you go, that's it. All right.
Mayor, two quick things. Commissioner Anderson, I just want to bring up, if you are getting texts or aggressive mail or anything, make sure it's reported. Make sure it's either on the record or something. I just highly recommend that, if you are receiving those. Want to know if there's anything otherwise that you're receiving through mail or through anything else. I just want to make sure that.
And you you still keeping your your city cellphone? Is it still operational?
It is today, thankfully. We'll see when I started. So will you be turning off public comment, video live feeds? Okay, well, then I need two minutes to get that set up.
So your your city cellphone is working, and it's not, I just want to make sure that it's not full. So people can leave you an email or a voicemail on your
I've been getting emails, yes.
On your city cellphone.
Yeah, why are you interested?
I just, I'm just asking.
Why are you interested?
Because I want to know, because that that's the way we should be operating for for people who want to have city business. You know, should go to a city cellphone or make your cellphone available to everybody.
That's interesting you say that. I'll take note of that. All right, I need a few minutes to set up my camera then.